It is six o'clock. We will, we are adjourning from executive session and back into regular session for the workshop. We have nothing to report from the executive session. So we will adjourn the workshop and at six o'clock, we will open the city council meeting, the regular session on November fourteenth, 2023. Mr. Garcia, are you ready for prayer and invocation?
I am.
All right.
You'll please stand.
Thank you. You go bow your heads with me. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for giving us another day to live in your wonderful, beautiful creation. And as flawed as we are as humans, as your children, you continue to love us graciously and bless us abundantly, and we humbly thank you. I pray for a blessing over our city, our state, and our nation. May your favor and protection be on all of us, including our allies abroad. God, we welcome your presence in this land tonight. Thank you for the place that you have given us to conduct the city's business. I pray that our citizens feel prioritized and welcomed to express their ideas and observe their own disturbance, perform the work that we have been elected to fulfill. I pray for a productive and open dialogue on all issues before us this evening. Guide us as we govern our community in a manner that best serves all of our people. May your will be done on earth as it is in heaven, and in your son's name we pray. Amen.
Can you join me in the voice?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. As you've all noticed, we have a new seating arrangement, and Roman, you have asked for that for a long time. So staff and Dalton, we thank you guys for bringing that about and appreciate it. Announcements, first, second of all, I want to say, I hope you all brought your pillows. It's going to be a long night. All right. Who is doing our announcements for us today?
I'm over here.
Oh, there you are.
Move from, yeah, move from the other side. I want to welcome everybody tonight. As the mayor said, we do have a new setup, lot, lot more people in here. Next month, we're going to put a disco ball right up there. At the end of the meeting, we can. All right. We've got a few things going on before we meet again, and that will be in a month because we don't have a meeting next, in two weeks because of the Thanksgiving holidays. So keep that in mind. You can show up, but there probably won't be anybody here. We've got a bunch of library activities as all, as always. I'm not going to go over all of them. I would encourage you to go to our website and see what all there is out there. I am going to mention that this Saturday, we have local author Mike Lowery. He'll be here for our author talk, and he's going to be at the library at 2:00 PM discussing his book, How So Days of Valla. So if you don't have anything to do Saturday afternoon, 2:00 PM, drop by and take a listen to him. All right. What's everybody doing Saturday night? We've got a little event downtown. One hundred, we hit one hundred floats.
Ooh.
So it's going to be a long, long parade, a lot of fun. And we look forward to it every year. That starts at six o'clock. Of course, people start lining up long before that. There'll be all kinds of things going on. We encourage everybody to come on down. It's a lot of fun. Twenty-two, twenty-two years? Is that how long we've been doing this? Twenty-two years. So great event every year, lot of lights, lot of, lot of fun. Come on down and see us. There will be some strict closures, especially on the lower Water Street area, but keep that in mind when you're moving around, but they won't be long. And since it'll be a while before we meet again, we've got another Parks event going on December second, and this will actually be before we meet again. And it's our running home for the Holidays 5K. Encourage everybody who wants to, you don't have to get dressed up, but it does make it much more fun. You can see a lot of great outfits out there, Christmas related, holiday related, and we encourage everybody to come out. That starts at four o'clock, which is Saturday, December second. We've been doing that for three or four years now, too. So sign up, come on out, run, and have a good time. We look, look forward to everybody seeing us. And last, we didn't put a slide at it, out about it, but we are going back to stage three in the morning. So moving from stage four to stage three, so you could start turning those sprinklers again, seven to nine AM on Tuesdays and Saturdays and Wednesdays and Sundays, depending on what address you have. That takes place, I think we begin at 12:01 tonight. So moving in the right direction as far as water is concerned. That's my announcements. Mayor, do you have anything?
Thank you.
Anybody?
No.
Thank you, Stuart.
All right. Thank you.
Roman?
So as you can probably all see, if you usually attend our meetings, this is a different format that we have as the mayor started out. I'm very excited to have this. It's something that I've been committed to improving for our citizens and all the members of the public. So thanks to our new city manager and his support, Mr. Rice, and specifically a couple of city staff members, Mr. Cunias and Mr. Greenwell, who's actually our AV person in the back, you don't normally get to see him, but they spent a lot of time revamping this whole room so that it could fit and accommodate what I think it was intended to. So as you can see, we've nearly doubled the seating capacity that we have in here. We removed those barriers away, and I think it created a more unified and welcoming atmosphere for everyone. So very happy about that. And like I've told everybody, let's just continue to work together to put the citizens of Kerrville first.
Thank you.
Thank you. Obviously, we are missing one councilperson tonight. Councilmember Harris is under the weather, running a fever and not feeling well. So we told him that as much as we need him here, that we'd rather he stayed home. So a couple other announcements that I would like to make, they're kind of community items. With the county, we have been in conversation, and there's been a lot of work going on for a sidewalk from the vets hospital and from Freedom Pass, the, the housing for the veterans. There will now be a sidewalk that will go down to Flat Rock Park and the River Trail. And it's going to go down, it won't go along 27, it's going to go down alongside or on some property that's right alongside Maldonado's Nursery. So it has taken TechDOT, the city, the county, and Maldonado's to make this happen, but it's, it's going to happen, and we're excited about that. So despite what rumors say, we can work with the county, and we do. So Petzaline, Brenda, what is the good thing that's happening there?
Well, we have had a couple of adoption, adoption events out at our safe house, which is at 2102 Memorial Boulevard. It's on the Shriner campus. And we have been, we've adopted out, we adopted out nine or 10 animals this last Saturday and seven or eight animals the, the Saturday before. And we are going to try very, very hard to make this a every Saturday event, because that's what's been missing in our community, is we don't have any weekend adoptions. You know, all our animals are, that are at the county shelter, the hours are eight to five, closed at lunch, closed on weekends. So a lot of animals were losing their life to euthanasia because parents and families didn't have the opportunity to go look on a weekend. So we are trying to change that, and we've worked very hard, and we thank Shriner University so much for providing us with a safe house for Kerrville's unwanted and neglected animals. And we are trying to do what we can to get them in new homes. So please keep us in mind the next time you're looking for a furry friend and check in with us on our website to see if we are having an adoption event, because chances are, if it's a weekend, we will be.
And it's fun to watch those volunteers as they work both with the humans and the animals to pair them up. And it's not just walk in, say, I want that one, fill out paper, and go home. It's, there's a lot that goes into that, a lot of caring and love. It's neat to see.
Thank you for visiting us this last weekend.
I'll be back. Chief Maloney, I'd like you to say a little bit about Heroes in Arms, if you would, for us.
Oh, I will. Thank you. So we have hosted, the city of Kerrville and the Kerrville Fire Department, hosted a blood drive for this year. We've done four blood drives. So very common, you see in the area, this last one, very successful, 36 units were donated. That's 108 lives that were saved. But what's unique to this one in the state of Texas is that we are the first mobile blood bank that is collecting for the Heroes in Arms program. So what's the Heroes in Arms program? Back in March of this year, we are carrying whole blood on our ambulance, be able to administer to patients in the pre-hospital setting and provide that, that level of care where they need blood in a traumatic situation instead of fluids. And so the only way you can replenish that with the whole blood is with these programs called Heroes in Arms. It's O positive, low titer. Typically, in the past, you have to go to one of their facilities in Bernie or San Antonio to donate to that. And when we started having the program with the Kerrville Fire Department, one of my initiatives was, I think if we're going to be a part of the program, then we should also try to be a part of the donation for that, too. And so we had four donations to the Heroes in Arms program on Saturday, and I'm one of them. So I qualified for that. So kind of exciting that when I donate blood, literally three days later, it could potentially be on an ambulance in Kerrville. So I can track it and see, I have, I need to look, but I think that's a great thing we can do as a community, give them back and help in the Kerrville Fire Department and donate. They will test you at any of our blood drives for that, the Kerrville Fire Department blood drives, and see if you qualify. If you're O positive and low titer, they just have to do the test to see if you're low titer. So very exciting, and they're going to kick this program off. We got it started, and there's going to be more of the mobile blood banks. They're going to be doing that across Texas also. So we have administered eight, eight units of blood in the field to patients that have needed that since March. So very exciting. So thank you.
Thank you. And Chief McCall, you have a couple of things you'd like to say?
Yes, ma'am. I'd like to, first of all, invite everybody to join us Thursday morning at nine o'clock at Chick-fil-A for Coffee with Cop. Come by for some coffee and some conversation with Kerrville Police Department. We'd love to see you there. Second, we've just kicked off our Blue Santa program this year, collecting toys for needy children in our community, families in our community. You can donate new and unwrapped toys at Buzzies BBQ, the UPS Store, Sofast Printing, City Hall, Kinstopel, Nobility, the Kerrville Fire Department, Kerrville Police Department, Vision Source, or Moore's Home Furnishing. And we'll have that event on December ninth this year. So we're collecting toys up until that point and have that distribution on that day. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
A couple other things. K-Pub, our own K-Pub, has been voted as a 2023 top workplace designation, and this was done by the San Antonio Express-News. This was, they were picked through an online survey that was anonymous. So nobody had to say who they were, that type of thing. And it all came from the employees. So congratulations to K-Pub for that. And I think our hospitals have that same type of award. So great places to work in our city. That's neat. And then I'd like to congratulate Gail Salinas, our KEDC Executive Director. He has been appointed by the governor as the Chair of the Adult High School Charter School Program Advisory Committee. So a good committee for him to be on and gives us a little more recognition in, in Austin. So congratulations. And I think that's the only other thing I wanted to mention. Our new city manager is on, if you, if you have not heard, he's on 100 days to find out what's going on in our city and to meet people. And if some of you happened to see the Kerrville Daily Times this week, they had a picture of him, one of the things that I have enjoyed about what he's doing is he has four questions that he's asking everybody, every group that he is going to visit. Where are we now? Where do we want to go? What's holding us back? And what does it take to get there? Now, this isn't aside from our 2050 comprehensive plan. This is in conjunction with our 2050 plan. And I just, I thank him for that, and he's going to have lots and lots of good information when he finishes his 100 days, and he's only had about 30 of them. You've got a few more to go, right, Dalton? So, so thank you for that. All right. I think we're ready for a wonderful presentation. And if all of our visitors out in the lobby will come in, please. You're going to take up the whole front here. This is wonderful. You. And look who's at the end. We are so glad to have all of you here tonight. This is just wonderful. I'll come out here and stand in front of you. So you guys have been doing wonderful things this year, and it's kind of neat that at the end of the year, we are going to celebrate, and you have been all year long, but we're going to celebrate your 100 years with a proclamation. City of Kerrville proclamation, whereas 2023 marks the 100th anniversary of Shriner Institute, College, and University founded September 18th, 1923 by Captain Charles Shriner. And whereas the founders and past and present faculty and staff of the university have worked tirelessly to maintain the highest standards of education and excellence for the student experience. And whereas the university has played an invaluable role in shaping the minds and lives of generations of young people. And whereas the university has enriched the lives of many in the community through its education programs and quality programming for Kerrville and the surrounding communities. And whereas sincere gratitude is extended to Shriner University and the individuals therein who have given their talents and resources to make Shriner University a foundational part of our community. Now therefore, I, Judy Ickner, Mayor of the City of Kerrville, Texas, do hereby proclaim 2023 as the 100th anniversary of Shriner Institute, College, and University, right here in Kerrville, Texas. And I encourage all of our citizens to join me in celebrating the history, heritage, and success of Shriner University. Thank you all. Before you leave, you guys have come, I would like, I know we've got a meeting tonight that will take us to midnight, but you guys have come to see us, and I would like for all of you loudly and clearly, tell us your name and tell us how you are associated with Shriner. So we'll start over here.
Wilbert Icesis, I am the Assistant Vice President of Enrollment, and I'm new to the university just for two months.
Hi, everybody. My name is Valentina Hernandez. I'm a junior at Shriners University and majoring in cell biology, the Student Body Association President. Thank you.
I'm Burke Byer. I'm a fifth year at Shriner. I'm an exercise science pre-professional major, and I'm from Baytown, Texas, and I'm captain of the volleyball team.
My name is Sydney Coffin. I am from New Braunfels, Texas. I am a sophomore. I am a marketing major, and I am a Student Government Association sophomore senator.
I'm Owen Comsock. I'm a sophomore in sport management major. I'm from Corpus Christi, Texas, and I'm the captain of the soccer team.
I'm Evelyn Silva. I'm from Corpus Christi, Texas. I'm a junior majoring in marketing, and I am the student, sorry, Student Activities Board Executive Officer for Marketing.
I'm Shining. I'm from here in Kerrville, Texas. I'm a junior at Shriner studying marketing with a minor in, or I'm studying finance and minor in marketing, and I am here for Student Government Association for Member-at-Large for Community Service.
I'm Frank Lee Girdle. I'm a sophomore. I'm studying exercise science. I'm from Uvalde, Texas, and I'm here representing Delta Phi Epsilon as their Vice President of Programming.
I'm Paige Promising. I'm from San Antonio, Texas. I am majoring in communication, and I am ATO's handler.
And when we start with the back, tell us how long faculty, if you guys will tell us how long you've been there.
Good evening. I'm Mark Chusak. I'm Vice President for Student Recruitment, External Relations, Marketing, Communications. I've been at Shriner for 22 years.
I'm Marta Diffen. I'm the Special Assistant to the President at Shriner, and I've been with the university a little over six years.
Good evening. I'm Lucian Costley. I'm the Vice President for Planning and Finance and CFO, and I've been at Shriner University for nine years.
Good evening. My name is Rex Quick. I'm the Vice President of Infrastructure and Chief Information Officer. I've been with Shriner for 14 years.
I'm Travis Frampton, Provost and Vice President for Academic Affairs at Shriner, and I'm in my fifth year.
I'm Janet McKenny. I'm Chair of the Board of Trustees, and I volunteered for Shriner for 15 years.
I'm Charlie McCormick. I'm President at Shriner, and I've been president, or I've been there for 14 years.
William Woods, Dean of Academic Support, 26 years.
Danielle Yansky, Director of Development, 10 years.
Matt Goodwin, Dean of Students, 18 years.
I'm Dr. Diana Camuzzi. I direct the Health Professions Program. I've been at Shriner for 30 years.
I'm Bill Davis. I'm the Dean of Faculty. This is my sixth year at Shriner.
Charlie, would you like to say a few words?
Well, Mayor, just want to say thanks to you and the city council and the city staff for this resolution. It's been a wonderful 100 years we've been able to partner with the city of Kerrville. We look forward to the next 100 as well. So thank you very much. Thanks to all of you.
We had a great ceremony Friday afternoon out at the airport for the new aviation program. And just, it was exciting, exciting. You guys are, how many new programs this year have you had?
A lot. And more to come.
Well, I'm going to give you this, and we just say thank you to all of you. You have been wonderful partners, and we expect that to continue. So turn around, shake the hands of a council member. Or somebody in the audience. And come back and see us before the next 100, okay? Can you have something? S.U., baby! S.U., baby! Woo!
Watch the tail. Watch the tail.
That may be the most fun part of our whole night. Shelley?
We have one more, two B.
Oh, yes, that's right. I'm sorry. The Recovery Coalition. Joe?
Good evening, Council. Thank you so much for what you do for the city of Kerrville. My name is Joe Pizor, Chief Operating Officer at Peterson Health. Today, though, representing is Chair for the Kerrville Recovery Community Coalition. And so I want to give you a brief update on where we are and happy to answer any questions that you may have. So next, just, oh, there we go. There's the pointer. Okay. So I'm not going to read this entire slide, but the purpose of the coalition is to help the recovery community become fully integrated into the fabric of Kerrville. And the coalition's job is really to help reduce barriers that, again, help them become assimilated back into the community, as well as identify and advocate goals and ideas for enhancing positive relationships. So the membership, I happen to be Chair this year. This is my third and final year on the coalition. Several other folks will be rotating off. Also with me here today is Krista Lovett. She is a member this year, and so she has two additional years to go. But Deanna Allen is co-chair. Joe Dupree has served as Secretary for the past two years. He will be rolling off this year. This is his third and final year. Caitlin Christopher is a new member. Thomas Hurt will be rolling off this year as well, as well as Cynthia Tate. And then, like I said, Krista Lovett's here with me today. So accomplishments and work plans. So one of the things when I took over as Chair for the coalition, it's great for us to be able to think, hey, what are some things that we believe are important for the recovery community? But really, what I wanted to do was get some feedback and find out what is it from the recovery community that you need from us, the coalition, to help accomplish some of our goals? So in February, we did have a stakeholder feedback session. In order to be able to get some folks there, we also had a naloxone training, in which we did some training on that, as well as gave away naloxone at that event. And so that really, that February session helped drive our work plan for this calendar year. So we also implemented an online suggestion submission, so it's not feasible for us to have feedback sessions every month. And so what we've done is give folks an opportunity to be able to submit comments online on things that they might think the coalition could potentially help with. We also very proud working with the Mental Health Coalition, kind of revamped our resource guide. Was a great guide before, but did a lot of work on updating that and making it more easily producible, as well as adding a QR code that folks could be able to access online. Also been working on a warrants clinic to be able to help resolve any outstanding warrants people may have that may be a barrier to them being able to get a job or get their driver's license back or different things like that. Also talked about what's called a reverse job fair, and so really being able to educate employers on what you can expect in terms of hiring somebody and employing somebody who may be in recovery. And so that's something that we have and are currently looking at, as well as some educational outreach for those folks in recovery to help get jobs. Again, what can we provide as a resource to help them with that? The other thing that we're very proud of, so this year, we've taken part, and really for at least the past three years since I've been on the coalition, but taken part in what's called the International Night of Remembrance. So this happens every August 31st, and it's a international event, but it's basically for overdose awareness and help bring awareness to that. So we did hold this, this year on August 31st was at the CROC, and it's annual campaign to end overdose, remember without stigma those who have passed, and also acknowledge the grief of family and friends. So appreciate everybody who is able to make it. We had a decent turnout, about 75 people there, and so very fortunate for a great group of people who helped put that together. I'm going to end with just a, it's a four-minute or so slideshow, but I think what this really helps highlight, you know, we, we hear about overdose, we hear about fentanyl, things like that. More than 106,000 people have died from May 2022 to May of 2023, and those are just numbers. But what we can't forget is those numbers are people. That could be somebody's mother, brother, father, and sister. And a lot of times, we think, well, they're a druggie or whatever the case may be. But what we ask at the International Night of Remembrance is for people to submit pictures of those that we have lost. And so I want to share with you the slideshow from this year, and that's always had a big impact for me and hope it will the same for you.
They speed down Patton, they speed down Pershing. Harper Street and Blue Bonnet might as well be airstrips because they fly down there. And I heard today that several animals have now been hit by speeding cars, and they don't even stop. We've already had two hit-and-run incidences involving children. Thankfully, no one was hurt, but one of those children no longer plays outside. We might not be so fortunate next time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Barbara Dool Ferguson?
The city of Kerrville submitted an opinion piece in the Kerrville Daily Times this morning, stating that the city remains in full compliance with its permit from Headwaters, which per state law automatically renews prior to expiration. That's unquote. I called Gene Williams, the General Manager at Headwaters, today, and asked him, is it true the city of Kerrville is in full compliance with Headwaters Groundwater Conservation District water permit? His reply, and this is a direct quote, absolutely not. They are operating without a permit. That is an untrue statement. I went on and asked him, is it true, as was stated in the article, that the permit from Headwaters automatically renews prior to expiration? I quote him again, no, it's not. Headwaters exists to protect our aquifers, and when the city's drought conservation plan failed to take into consideration the severe drought this summer, Headwaters stepped in to correct the situation. They are now requiring the city to maintain as a minimum the same drought stages as the rest of the county. If the city had had an intelligent drought conservation plan and acted responsibly, this never would have happened. This looks like the city is either, one, hiding our true water supply situation so they can approve more development; two, avoiding appropriate drought stages because it cuts into revenue; three, pitching a fit because they can't do it their own way; four, or all of the above. I think the citizens of Kerrville deserve to know the truth of the situation regarding this permit. They deserve to know about our ability to provide water to current citizens, and if you approve all the 868 new home sites that are coming up on your agendas, the ability to provide water for those as well. In conclusion, a correction should be issued to the public in the paper. How can the city mislead the public on an issue so important as water? Now, whatever little legal tit-for-tat you're having with Headwaters, they are the permitting agency. If they say you do not have an operating permit, you do not. Thank you.
Thank you.
Vicky Marsh?
Good evening, Mayor, Council members. Can you hear me okay? I'm Vicky Marsh, Colonel, United States Marine Corps, retired, and I serve as President of the Hill Country Veterans Council. And our purpose is to ensure that the Kerrville VA Medical Center has appropriate staffing and services. But tonight, my topic is totally different. By way of background, nearly all levels of government support veterans in some way. Each cares for and honors veterans for their service. So what is a veteran? This often comes up. Title 38 of the U.S. Code of Federal Regulations defines a veteran as a person who served in the active military naval air service and who was discharged under conditions other than honorable. At the level, at the federal level, this is done through the Veterans Administration, because it helps eligible veterans, often from discharge from military service through their deaths, with its three subordinate organizations. And those are the Veterans Benefits Administration, the Veterans Health Administration, which is what our Kerrville VA comes under, and the Veterans, the National Cemetery Administration. Next is the state level. Texas now has bragging rights for the largest number of veterans in the U.S., at over 1,540,000. Moreover, it has a proud, time-honored tradition of taking care of its own through state institutions. For example, the Texas Veterans Commission. State law requires counties with populations over 200,000 to have a Veterans County Service Officer. Then the counties must fund training provided by TVC. Kerr County's population is just over a quarter of that amount. Last estimate was 53,741 in July of '22, per the 2020 census. At the county level, Kerr County veterans came together in September of 2012 and persuaded the Commissioners Court to approve a full-time Veteran County Service Officer, which it did. And it has provided continued funding since 2013. However, in July of, excuse me, in June of 2021, we veterans had to re-justify the need for a Veterans County Service Officer, and because it is not state-mandated. At joint observance, the city and county came together on April 29th this year at the War Memorial to celebrate the 50th anniversary of veterans' return from Vietnam War. The Veteran County Services Officer, all-volunteer team of veterans, organized and conducted this event on short notice, because the county does not have the assets to do that. That said, it was well-attended and much appreciated by all veterans and those who support them. The county conducts two time-honored traditions to recognize veterans, the Memorial Day Observance at the Courthouse, and the Veterans Day Parades. The VCSOs organize and conduct the Memorial Day Observance. They've gotten an all-volunteer team of veterans to help. Time it up?
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Gary Nohler?
Mayor, can I move to authorize one more minute for her time? I make a motion to authorize one more minute. If it gets passed by majority.
Are you okay with that?
Okay with it. Okay. Well, I'll second it.
Thank you.
Due to the wide popularity of Veterans Days and Veterans Day Parades in general, the county resumed putting on a Veterans Day Parade with a drastically shortened route in November of '22 at 10:00 a.m. instead of the previous time at 4:00 p.m. The timing and the chosen route do little to interfere with businesses and traffic. It ends with a celebration in Louise Hayes Park. We thank the mayor for taking time to participate in this year's Veterans Day Parade. County veterans and their supporters provide the voluntary manpower and the other costs of recognizing area veterans for their military service and sacrifice with a Veterans Day Parade on this federal holiday designated for honoring veterans. It's noteworthy that the business community seems to go all out to support veterans. In closing, as Gary Nohler was going to precede me, we veterans appreciate the city council's waiving the fee in 2022 and again in 2023. We ask that the council reconsider its resolution, which stated, without further explanation, that this year's waiver was a one-time event and that there would be no subsequent waivers. Members of the veteran community have asked us why the city council has broken its historical precedent of waiving fees for this patriotic community event, because it runs contrary to the spirit of this time-honored tradition. Thank you.
Thank you.
Gary Nohler?
Good evening, my name's Gary Nohler, and I'm here to address a couple of topics on veterans. I've been in Kerrville, in the Kerrville area, for about 20 years. I am a United States Army veteran, I served for 19 months and one day. Eleven months of that was Vietnam as a rifleman in an infantry company. Also serve as Commander of the Jacob Seelike Memorial Ambests Post 1,000 here in Kerrville. I'd like to thank the mayor for coming out to the VA on Saturday, Veterans Day, and announcing, along with Commissioner Pace's, the Veterans Pathway. I think that's a great addition to that side of town. And I want to give credit to Tom Osher, the County Commissioner. He's the first person, I think, that brought that to people's attention, and he saw a lot of veterans had crossed Highway 27 and went down because they just wanted to sit down at a lake. And he thought that was a little bit, needed some improvement. And also, the tie-in to the River Trail is a great addition. Believe it or not, there's veterans who will leave the VA facility on their little motorized wheelchairs, run down the River Trail all the way to Sydney Baker and go to HEB and buy groceries, and ride the River Trail back. Now, I don't know if that's legal or not, and if it's illegal, I didn't say anything. The second thing is Veterans Day Parade. Appreciate the fact that the city waived the fees for the Veterans Day Parade again this year. Back in 2013, I was in a group of Vietnam-aged veterans, and we thought that Kerrville should have a Veterans Day Parade. We still think that. And my job was to get the permit, and we asked for a waiver of the fees. Back then, we were told, no, pay the fees, and if you don't break anything, come back, and we may give you your money back. Well, we didn't break anything, so we got money back. And that went on for two or three years, and then it changed to where it doesn't make much sense to pay the money and rebate the money. Why don't you just come and ask for a fee waiver? And so that's happened every year since, to include this year. We had a little pause there because the Chairman of the Parade moved on, and COVID hit, but then last year Jeff Harris and Byron Warren picked up the parade. Unfortunately, Byron passed away before Veterans Day last year. Jeff moved to City Council this year, so the parade was, again, looking for somebody to take it. And luckily, Sarah Kusurik and Brad Wilson picked it up kind of last minute. And we want to encourage that to continue. This town needs a patriotic parade. It's got a wonderful Christmas parade, but Christmas parades are not a patriotic parade. And we're missing that element to our young people. And the military services are having a tough time recruiting, and one of the reasons is that children today didn't grow up like I did in the '50s, right after World War II and right after Korea War. Everybody knew a veteran, everybody knew what veterans did. But Kerrville's got 12% of its adult population is veterans. The state of Texas is about 6%. And so there's a lot of veterans around here. And we appreciate all your future support that you can give for Veterans Day Parade. It would be very, very much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you.
George Burdi?
George Burdi, 1616 Glen Road. And just to piggyback on that, I've seen one of those wheelchairs. I know he lives in that Freedom Trail Apartments, and I saw him at Billy Jean's. And so he's figured out a way to get all the way over there. But that's not why I came up for. So I just really just came to explain something that happened yesterday. It was a little disturbing for me. This room is supposed to be a room where we just, you can discuss ideas. A couple of people have already referred to it being a welcoming place for dialogue and whatnot, which is what I expect when I come here. I came yesterday to this building to pay my city water bill. And in leaving, I had someone come up who gets preferential seating, more or less, kind of extra access to you all and the city, because he covers events, come up to me in a somewhat aggressive way, asking me a question. I didn't really know what he was trying to ask at first, and he's right in my face, asking me questions. And I said, well, you come up to me in this way, I'm just going to go. So I go proceed to get into my car. He proceeds to go on the other side of the car, yelling and waving his finger at me. Though, all I remember is the words coming out of his mouth. He just, it just makes you look stupid. Now, whether you agree with the thoughts I have or don't, I expect that I can come to this place, even if it's not a political event, and safely do my business. I would appreciate if somebody would contact me and ask me my further details of what I'm describing, and see if there's something that can be done about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's the end of the citizen speakers?
Thank you. All right, we will move to number four. The consent agenda is, Council, are there any items that you wish to have pulled? Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to have any of those items pulled?
No one has, no one has filled out a speaker form.
Thank you.
Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you, all in favor, right hand, and it is unanimous. That takes us to 4A. By the... That's right, I've got to go one more page.
We got all the way to the floor.
That's right. To 5A.
Ordinance number 2023-29, second reading. An ordinance annexing an approximate 214.1 acre tract of land, which includes an adjacent right-of-way existing as a portion of Olympic Drive, all of which is out of the Samuel Wallace Survey #114, Abstract #348, and Samuel Wallace Survey #113, Abstract 347, into the corporate limits of the city of Kerrville, Texas. Such property being located within Kerr County, Texas, and the extraterritorial jurisdiction of the city of Kerrville, Texas, and generally located adjacent to Loop 534 north of Olympic Drive. Further describing the property to be annexed, adopting a service plan for the property annexed, and establishing the zoning both and establishing the zoning both for the property annexed and contiguous tract of land located adjacent to Loop 534, and providing other matters relating to the subject. There are five citizen speakers signed up.
Thank you. And this is a second reading. All right, Drew.
Good evening, council. Didn't have a presentation today since it is second reading, but did want to clarify two things in the ordinance on the, I believe it's the second page of the ordinance, referencing property two, that is 21.12 acres, that is currently within the city limits, that is being rezoned accordingly. And the effective date of this ordinance will be delayed to January 1st, 2024.
Okay. And what was that acreage number again?
21.12.
Okay. Anything else for us, Drew? And council, do any of you have a question for Drew before we have our speakers? All right.
Since first reading, those are the only changes that have been made to the ordinance, as in our packet, in addition to the two that you just gave us, right? And the extension of the effective date is...
Change where is the?
Document. It's another section? It'll be added?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And that'll, January 1st of next year?
Yes.
Okay. When did we get all this information for those two items?
Excuse me. Because everything was kind of pushed on the timeline, or, you know, getting everything on the negotiations up to date, the clients of Lennar and them who are working, because there's obviously multiple parties involved in this, they didn't want to annex into the city if the deal didn't go through. So this just makes sure that those assets are protected, so it was all within the last couple of days. Everything kind of unfolded in the last couple of days.
Gotcha.
Doesn't change the core of overall the agreement, just a couple of the small details on that.
Okay, thank you. And I'll just, not going to reiterate, but I do have objections to this as it is. This combines with the next item, which is the TERS, as well as the proposal for the second Lennar housing development. I think that there, I mean, there are several concerns about the first inefficiency, inadequate of the document that we have in front of us that was put out to the public with the notice, and changes were made. Information that we received today, like I just said, not in the documents. I'll reiterate this, but this is probably like the first step out of many to continue with the second development with Lennar. And we still don't have a development agreement, which was the expectation after postponing it from the first reading. And I think the fact that we've postponed it from the first reading in our very first meeting in October, which was like October 10th, maybe, the fact that we are over a month from the postponement just goes to prove that it was not ready for us, for it to be presented to council and for us to consider it then. And I think still today, which is going to be probably evident by some questions that may be asked, or by the next item, which is the TERS, very evident that it's still not ready to be approved. And it's still inadequate for the community with the quality of the housing. It doesn't take much research to do to show that Lennar has nationwide very low ratings. And if we are going to try to solve the problem of affordable and attainable housing for our community, that's a great goal for us, and it's set in the plan, our comprehensive plan. But in my opinion, this is not the way to do it. And I've expressed that in closed session and in open session multiple times, and this is not the project for our community. So I'll stop there.
Let's go ahead with our speakers.
Ronald Carroll.
My name is Ronnie Carroll. I live at 3577 Lacumbre in Kerrville, Texas. I was a home builder in Houston for 39 years. I was a director of the Greater Houston Builders Association. I'm a life director of the Texas Association of Home Builders. I was the Greater Houston Builders Association Builder of the Year in 2009. And during the '80s, the Houston Business Journal made me one of their top 25 builders. And I say that not to shed light on me, but as a judge would say, I have more than a layman's knowledge of the building industry. And I'm here to speak about a city of 25,000 giving land and $5 million to a $35 billion Wall Street firm who made $1.1 billion the third quarter of this year. Housing affordability was a problem my entire career. It's an economic problem. It's not a community problem. I still get the National Association of Home Builders Monday morning briefing. Last month, or maybe this month, I can't remember, it's my age, there was an article that highlighted, the headline was, "Housing affordability hits an all-time low." It's a national problem. It can't be solved with government subsidies. That has been tried. Lennar Homes is going to use the free land, the $5 million, to buy down these 8% interest rates, so they can qualify the low-income buyer to buy their $280,000 house. The people move in, they pay their mortgage, they pay their taxes, they pay their utilities, and they pay their normal home maintenance. In three to five years, the mortgage rate adjusts to the market. Their expenses are more than their income.
That's the buzzer, sir.
Huh?
That's the buzzer. Your time is up.
Can I just say my last, my closing statement?
If you have one sentence.
My, I'm gonna say something that my experience makes me truly believe.
One sentence, please.
What?
One sentence.
She's wanting you to wrap up in one sentence.
One sentence, please.
I think it is.
Go ahead.
I'm going to say something my experience makes me truly believe. If Kerrville goes forward with these plans and ideas, sometime in the not-so-distant future, you and the citizens of Kerrville are gonna regret it. I think, thank y'all.
Thank you, sir.
Ed Hamilton.
And mayor, I think there's a mistake. There's supposed to be four minutes for all of the speakers' times on regular agenda items.
I guess we did make a mistake there, right?
Sure, sure. Thanks, sir.
My apologies, sir. We dipped you a little bit.
Can I go back?
I think you got your point over.
His last 30 seconds that you stripped him of? You're not gonna?
If you will agree with us, we're good.
Do you agree with us? Because you probably don't.
Yes, sir.
And, just a minute, please. Okay, one sentence, one sentence.
You get 30, your 30 seconds back.
I'm a retired home builder. I can tell you, interest rates rule the building industry. And I'm glad I'm not a builder now, but I believe the city of Kerrville is getting in the building industry, and I don't think it's a good idea.
Thank you, sir.
Might invite him to a workshop. My name's Ed Hamilton. I'm a resident of Kerrville for a long time. I live at 1316 Warbler Drive. And I'm also, I've done low-income housing and moderately priced housing. We owned and operated units all over South Texas for about 30 years. And it's a terrible big situation. I do want to digress just a moment, because I was so moved by the slides that we received. And I feel this is so inconsequential, and that's such a big problem that we face. Those loved ones were so young, and I'm 93 years old. I never tried fentanyl. But I have other copies of this, if you'd like to have them. 500 homes on 30-foot lots, subdivision similar to 500-unit apartment complex. Congress living as a single socioeconomic group is never a good idea in a community. Such a situation lends itself to becoming an area of lots of social problems, such as we had in the Oakdale apartment complex about 30 years ago. Here are the numbers that I did, because I'm previously a builder like he was. I pulled some numbers out of what we've been given. 500 houses over 10 years, going to cost $300,000 apiece, that's $150 million. Material costs of that about $50 million. Those materials are being shipped into Kerrville. There's six lumber companies in Kerrville don't get to participate in that $50 million sale. As a result, $4.5 million in sales tax are not enjoyed here. The carpenters, electricians, plumbers, planters, painters, laborers, they're coming from out of town, and very few of those that live here will be employed by Lennar Homes. Lennar has its own sales force, so Kerrville's 356 realtors will not participate in the sale unless they bring the buyer to the first meeting. That's the project. Normal course of business, these 356 realtors would receive about $5 million commissions in the course of that 10-year period. Lennar has its own title company, and our three title companies will not earn the $1.3 million in closing fees, title insurance they would normally receive. Lennar has their own mortgage company, so there are 10 banks and credit unions, plus a number of local mortgage brokers, who will not earn their fee associated with $150 million project. The only thing flowing back to Kerrville is the money they pay for the land and the houses. Even the increased tax evaluation under the TERS arrangement will not benefit taxpayers, but flow back to that project. Please don't support this 500-unit project. Over the last four years, the city, county, and school have issued 235 billion, million, I'm sorry, million dollars in bond debt. Taxpayers are paying about $10 million a year in bond service, just the debt, just to retire the bonds. I don't care what the Standard &amp; Poor's says about our rating, we don't need to issue another $20 million in bonds. Thank you, and I have additional copies.
Thank you, sir.
Thomas McComick.
Thank you. I'm Thomas McComick. I've been a realtor in Kerrville for 28 years. When I bought my, one of my properties, far side of Harper, I couldn't see a light. There are lights everywhere now. But I'm talking about Kerrville. We should not repeat the mistakes that we've made in the past. If we drive down one of the Habitat for Humanity streets, the cars are all over. In America, the poor people have two cars. Any place that is built today should have an allowance for two cars. You can't put that on a 30-foot lot with a 15-foot setback. We cannot afford the traffic jams and the congestion that that makes. We should not give that size company the tax advantage that takes away from me, the taxpayer, because we have to pay what goes there. Do we have an environmental impact statement on that property? Do we? Yes? No? I take your silence as no. If we do not have an environmental impact statement that shows what's going to happen, do we have water? Do we have sewer capacity? Have those things been considered? I urge you to get full documentation before you consider giving that company what they're asking for. Tiny little houses with no place to park, no way to pay for it. As you know, you can borrow more money than you can pay back. Interest rates do that to you. Long sharks do that to the general public. It happens. I've seen it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
George Burdi.
George Burdi, 1616 Glen Road. I'm gonna try and stay on point, since we're just doing annexation here. So the contract is before you about annexation, refers to the state law 430672, doesn't really matter what's the number it is, but it says, before you can annex something, you have to enter into a service agreement with the owner of the property. The contract goes on to state the owner is, refer to the owner as Lennar Homes, which of course, we all know, isn't the case. So I would ask you again, why are you looking at a contract between the city and someone who doesn't own the property? The law states you have to have a service agreement with the owner of the property before annexing it. A simple thing would have been, between a month ago and now, to have changed it to represent the actual owner, because as the law says, the service agreement carries with the land. So if they sell it, it goes on to Lennar. So if Lennar has some agreement that they can represent Schreiner, that's a separate issue. It doesn't make them the owner. So it should be written as owner Schreiner, signed by Lennar, if that's how the arrangement was with Schreiner. But please don't mess up and sign a document that, in the city attorney's own words, he would never provide EIC, a deficient agreement. This is, you're looking at one right now that isn't legally compliant. It does not address the actual owner by name. Thank you.
Thank you.
Adrian Larson.
Let me address that question, that comment. I mean, based on the change to the ordinance to make it effective January 1st, we've covered that issue.
Sorry, can you say that again? I didn't hear it.
Based on the change to the ordinance, which it will be effective January 1st, we've covered that issue.
Adrian Larson.
Hello. I'm Adrian Larson, and my husband, Andy and I, moved to Kerrville 12 years ago, and we live at 2209 San Jacinto Drive, which is about a quarter mile from the Windridge Development. So that's why I'm here to give my perspective, because it's our neighborhood and it's going to affect us. So I've watched with a lot of interest the last couple of years as this development has been going on. My background is in the medical field, and I really don't have a lot of knowledge about finance or business, but I have a lot of practical knowledge, because both of my parents were builders in Houston. My father was a builder in northwest Houston for 50 years, built beautiful, high-quality homes. So I grew up around quality and beauty, and I'm, you know, that's just my background. So we are, we the people are going to have to pay for some of this development in the taxes, how it's set up. So, you know, I think we should have a say in it. It makes sense to me. And I see several major problems with this development at Windridge by Lennar Homes. Number one, just the basics. The building site is not flat. Because I live right there, it took them about a year to excavate and prepare that ground to build these tiny little... ground to build these tiny little stick homes. So, to my mind, that's not like an ideal situation. So we live in little college hills. This was all land that was from Shrinor years ago, and our little neighborhood has like maybe thirty houses, and they're all very nice. These houses are overpriced for poor quality. So at two-hundred-and-eighty-two thousand dollars a house, that is two-hundred-and-eighty dollars a square foot compared to the eighty dollars a square foot we paid twelve years ago for one acre of land. There's something kind of wrong there. This is shoddy construction. It won't last. And then further, who can afford a three-hundred-thousand-dollar mortgage? If units cannot sell, what is to stop BlackRock and Vanguard and these big investment companies from coming in and buying them up? They may turn into HUD properties or rental units, which increases crime and property devaluation. Please reference, I would reference you to Bobby Kennedy Jr.'s speeches and articles on this in the last few months. He's written very eloquently about this problem in other cities in America. So I understand we need workforce housing, and some people have talked about that today. But what are our other options? Apartments, condos, tiny homes, barn dominiums, remodeling existing homes? I really don't know the answers, but I don't think these tiny little lot, cheap homes is the answer, because if you think about it, three-hundred-thousand dollars, those people would be paying three thousand dollars a month mortgage. If they're going to the bank, the bank's not going to give them that loan if they're not making a hundred to a hundred-and-forty thousand dollars a year. That's, to me, not blue-collar workforce prices. You know, that's, I don't understand the thinking on that. And in conclusion, does the end justify the means? If we have property devaluation, it's going to erode our tax base. So.
Thank you, Ms. Larson.
That is the end of the citizen speakers.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor. I was here at five-thirty, and I signed up for this.
I have you on seven A and seven B, Pablo. Let me check. Maybe mumps.
I'll be real quick, Madam Mayor.
We'll go ahead.
Pablo Brinkman, thirty-nine, twenty-eight, Oak Park Drive. Mr. Garcia, I don't know if I agree with your sentiments about this seating. I feel like I'm at an IMAX right here, all the way up, and I never like sitting there. I like sitting back here where Mr. Bacon is, or back over here where this gentleman is. So, no, thank you all for today. I think thanks, we have Thanksgiving coming, and I just want to overall have a positive just about this, and want to thank Lennar for sticking through this, Shrinor, my client sticking through this, staff from P&amp;Z to EIC, to staff working on this tirelessly, both the ACM and the CM and Mr. Hoppy that's north of us right now. But just thank you all. I want to just give, and let us look at what things really are versus what they aren't. There's a lot of things that are being said tonight that we all know, we all have our opinions and things of that nature, but overall, I just want to tell you all thank you. And this is something that has been in the works for almost four years now. There's a lot and a lot of work. It hasn't been something that's been real quick. It hasn't been things that have, as was said tonight by some of the speakers and some other people on staff, of things changing quickly. There's nothing that's happened quickly about this project at all. So I just want to give you thanks and have everybody have a very safe holiday. Thank you.
Thank you.
That is the end of the citizen speakers.
All right. Counsel, are you, do you have more questions? Do you have comments that you would like to make? Brenda, we'll start with you. Anything?
I just want to say that I think that we have done all that we can. We have to remember that the infrastructure is thirty-two million dollars, and I haven't seen anybody step up to the plate to pay for infrastructure. Sometimes you have to make deals in order to meet your objectives. We have great building inspectors. A home is only as good as the inspector who inspects it, and we've got great inspectors. I know that you can Google bad reviews for Lennar, and you'll get tons of them, but you can also Google good reviews for Lennar and get just as many or more. So that's all I have to say about this topic.
This has been a long-running project. The council and staff have worked to take out some of the problem areas. I want to thank staff for working so hard on it. Only Mr. Hoppy, but our two assistant city managers and one acting city manager, and our new city manager have all spent hours and hours and hours trying to make this deal the absolute best we can make for our citizens. I know that a lot of people have made excellent points tonight, and I agree with many of them. I haven't heard anybody come up here and talk for the first time, homeowner. Would many of us want to live in the home we first lived in, our very first home? Would we like to go back to it? I would probably have to live there alone because Carolyn wouldn't go with me. But the truth is, there's a need for these needs. There's a need for these, and no one is speaking for those people. And, you know, I have agonized over this issue for the last, however, how many months I've been on city council and we've been talking about this, because I agree with a lot of the points being made. But I also know our major employers, the hospital, the school district, the police department, the fire department, they're losing people because they can't find a place to live, all right? And that's an economic problem. We've talked about economics tonight. Whatever a big economic problem is, we can't staff our critical services. It's a hard vote to make tonight. And, you know, we're going to be, the four of us, no matter how we vote, we're going to make several people here upset, and that's why y'all pay us the big bucks, you know? We're volunteers. We're neighbors. We've probably heard about this more than we wanted to. I teased, I teased earlier today that on this project, it feels like we've gone to the dentist to have the same tooth pulled three times, and it's hurt every time. Tonight is a decision day. When I left the house this morning, I told my wife I was going to watch YouTube tonight to see how I voted, because I still have, I was still on one hand, on the other hand. I appreciate everybody that came and talked tonight, and some of you are going to agree with me, and some of you aren't going to agree with me, and that's okay. That's what this, that's what local government's about.
Thank you. Roman, anything?
I think that, well, first, hey, backing off of that, of course, appreciate everybody's comments. I think the people have really spoken on this issue overwhelmingly, going to a point that was made from the councilman. You know, I haven't heard one person that probably come up and speak at our meeting besides anyone who's affiliated with Lennar or Shrinor speak in favor of this development. If every single person, you know, that's including email, people who come up here and speak at our meetings since this has been an issue, phone calls, text messages from our constituents and from community members, I haven't heard probably one citizen tell me, this is going to benefit our community, I want you to vote in favor of it. And I think we have to balance the interest of our community and the people that we serve and the interest that we have with working with other entities. And I think always, it should be overwhelming in favor of the people we serve, not for an entity that wants to come in and try to do something good with all kinds of what-ifs and maybes. One question I do have for the developer is, do we have a development agreement prepared and drafted up? Because I have not seen one, and it was my understanding that was going to be presented to us today, multiple times, that was expected. So just a simple question, hopefully it's a simple yes or no answer, whether there is one drafted or not.
Sure. My name is James McKnight. I'm here on behalf of Lennar, and the answer is yes.
And has it been sent over to the city?
Yes.
And why don't we have it for consideration tonight? Have you worked with the city to figure out?
I don't know. I'm not in charge of sending that over, so I couldn't answer that question.
All right. And in the development agreement, what is the price point of the houses, what are the price point of the houses going to be?
Maximum of two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand.
Maximum?
Yes.
Are you sure? There was a hesitation there. Are you sure?
No, no. Yes, it's maximum of two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand.
Is that just today, or is that going to increase at all?
It can increase as.
Okay. There we go. We're getting it.
Yeah, right. It follows.
I want to make sure the full truth comes out. I mean, I think it's fair.
No one's hiding anything. There is a federal standard that we follow.
There was, you said it was maximum, so.
That's right, and it fluctuates with that standard, with the HUD standard.
Again, there will be an increase.
There will be an increase, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
As AMI increases, it goes with it.
That was all my questions. Thank you.
Hey, Councilmember Garcia, on the, on the agreement, one of the things that we had discussed, and again, I'm going to take full responsibility on the draft agreement, again, we had kind of talked about it, we didn't want to present a ninety-five percent agreement to the pleasure, you know, to ensure that council had all the right information from, you know, discussions of council and some of the concerns that were addressed, we didn't want to put anything in there in the negotiation process prior to everything being really talked about. And so that was a decision that I ultimately made to make sure that we did not just present a ninety-five percent, that we presented, you know, a more complete document, you know, as this process continues. So, you know, that being said, if it pleases council based off of how this goes, and there is kind of a special session that could, you know, pursue or lead into after this, then that development agreement would be in y'all's hands, you know, past this, you know, at the ninety-nine point nine percent, you know, less substantive, you know, dot Ts, cross Is, or the other side. But yes, we did not, I did not want to put in a partial agreement to make sure that we didn't hit over the five percent of semantics.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. I would say I'm not going to vote on something in favor of it if it's not a hundred percent for the community. If it's something that's not completely ready, it's clearly not ready to be presented to us. So with that, I move to deny ordinance number twenty-two-three dash twenty-nine.
Is there a second? Would you like a few more words?
You talked about it being incomplete. We're not voting on the development agreement tonight?
No, he has just, he is.
Right. He said something that was incomplete. The parts that are complete is what is being voted on tonight.
Yes.
The part that is incomplete, and it's not exactly incomplete, we were just negotiating the key details, they're done. The development agreement has been done. All we were talking about was just the critical details. That's all there was. But we're not voting on the development agreement. So we're only voting on, you would only be voting on something that is complete.
Right, and we haven't seen it either, so.
But you're not, you're not voting on the development agreement at this time?
It's all, it's all one. It's combined into the same project. So I appreciate the explanation. It wasn't a question I asked, but thank you.
And Madam Mayor, too, if it pleases council and up to y'all prior to this one, if y'all want me to do the presentation, that would be slated for five.
B.
Five B. It's up to y'all, but we can do that however y'all want to do it, Madam Mayor.
What are you guys?
It's up to you.
Let's go ahead.
Okay, there is.
Oh.
There's a motion on the table to deny.
We have, but we didn't have a second.
Okay.
We did not get a second on that.
So motion dies for lack of second?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Let's, let's go ahead.
With, with presentation?
With presentation.
Okay.
Are you, you all okay with this? All right.
Martin, we're going to queue up the presentation. Five, it'll be, a presentation for five B, I believe.
If we're on item five A, why are we doing something for five B?
Well, we're going to have a presentation for five B because it relates.
Yeah, it's not, it's not, it just, and this was, this was kind of my mistake in the order of the presentation, really because the presentation encompasses the entire project. Should have had it on this one again. It's up, it's up to council. We can do it either after this motion, or we can do it on the next one. I can stand, it's only a couple minutes.
Let's go ahead with the presentation. Maybe it'll shed some light, and then we can go back to A and vote.
All right. Madam Mayor, council, residents, you know, Curville team, first off, I really want to thank, again, everybody. I want to keep this presentation as objective as possible, you know, since I've been here for a total of just over thirty days, jumping into the deep end and really picking up some great work that the team has already done. And so really coming up for some air on this, what I really want to do is really shed some light on the facts. You know, there's, I'm going to talk about some speculation. There's obviously a lot of different emotion coming into this. There's a lot of, you know, you know, different ways that we can take this. One of the advantages that I did have coming into this, and I definitely appreciate the team kind of working through some of my stuff, because really, nobody still knows me yet. You know, who's this guy standing up here, and what do I bring to the table? So we're still getting all that figured out, so I appreciate the team's patience on this while we figure this all out. Being able to come into this, having a second set of eyes, or a fresh set of eyes, I should say, I was really able to dive in and ask a lot of questions. You know, there was a lot of apprehension coming into this, you know, is this right? What's going on? When I got brought in, you know, it's the twenty-fifty plan. This is what our city is kind of based around, and how does that, that kind of flow in? So when we look at the current situation, some of the questions that came to mind, and again, let me, let me caveat the city manager and our team's role. We serve really at the pleasure of council. We are there to implement that policy, to execute the policy, and ultimately to execute and implement the budget, you know, set forth and set by city council. What's great about the twenty-fifty plan, and a little plug for me on this, is I chose Curville as a place that I wanted to come and be and live and be a part of because of the planning that the city has done, because without planning, we really, it's hard for us to determine the direction that we're going to go and how we're going to get there. It's easy to say, well, we don't know this, or I don't know the answer to this, and ultimately, are we ever going to get it right? Yeah. Is it always going to be perfect? Absolutely not. You know, but a lot of the things that I've heard over the past month, we've really tried to take in and listen to all the different things. Now, I'm an upfront and honest guy, and the bottom line is, are we always going to be happy with what we get? Absolutely not. And the best thing that we can do is, how do we have the greatest impact on the most amount of people while minimizing the negative impact on the least amount of people? And that's kind of really, I think, from an integrity standpoint, what we need to try to do. And guess what? One day you're going to make somebody happy, and the next day you're going to make the same person upset. Sometimes it's the nature of the beast. This is, this is like lost luggage. It's a thankless industry. So the questions, and this is questions for anybody. Need for housing? What types of housing? Density? Target demographics? And I talk about these very simplistically from the comprehensive plan because we know we need housing. The question is, is, well, what type of housing? Do we want one-acre lots? Do we want ten-acre lots? Do we want, you know, small houses, tiny homes, Conex homes? There's a lot of things that even from the state law perspective that we can't even dictate even in, in, in certain neighborhoods. We can't go in and dictate what materials are used. It could be outside of an HOX. So there's a lot of things that we are, that are dictated by state law. Density, and I'm going to talk about this a little bit more, there was a density question that came up and a concern that was, that kind of arose, arisen during this, and we changed some of that. Target demographics, you know, I heard a lot about Houston. Hate to admit it, but I grew up in the north side of Houston. I went to, you know, the inner cities, you know, kind of of Houston. And what I love about Houston is it's a great example of when you start going into the suburbs from Beltway to Highway ninety-nine, which is the third outer loop, things changed. You started having high-density alleyway living. You started having different density criteria, different protocols, and how things are done. You started looking at things that are very different, and there's nine-hundred-square-foot homes that are, that are alleyway acres over by Highway ninety-nine that are going for eight-hundred thousand dollars, you know, and it's a tough world out there. Don't want to dive into economics one-on-one, but supply and demand. And historically, over the past fifty-plus years, and I'm still young, but over the past fifty years, we have historically had low inventory. So yeah, there is, there is challenges that we're trying to face, and every city is trying to overcome these challenges. So, area facts. Our area median income, based off of Fannie Mae when I pulled up today, is eighty-four-thousand six hundred dollars at a hundred percent. Our area median income, based off of Fannie Mae, when I pulled up today, is eighty-four thousand, six hundred dollars at a hundred percent. That's, that's, that's up there. You know, that's, that's quite a bit. Our police officers and our firefighters are starting off at roughly about fifty-eight thousand dollars a year. And, and Kerrville's kind of an island. Everybody knows that. I'm preaching to the church on that. And I put thirty percent of area median income or AMI and sixty percent area median in income in AMI because based off of the government standards, those are what are considered to the definitions of either, you know, affordable slash workforce-type housing. Are we ever gonna get it right? Again, no. Median sold price of houses, four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, which is up two point four percent from October. And and it's only getting worse, you know, and of course, coming in from, you know, central Texas, moving out here, literally just went through this whole process about sixty days ago. And you're seeing the rental market increase, and prices are actually going down, supplies going up on rentals, and, and prices are coming down because the inventory is going up. Homes that are two hundred and fifty thousand to about three hundred and seventy-five thousand are are pretty much flying off the market, depending on where they're at. Um, I'm not a realtor, but I bought enough houses and and have sold a few houses that I, that I understand the market a little bit. Anything that's under two hundred and fifty thousand, depending on location, is what's not selling, and a lot of these homes are nineteen-eighties, you know, that are either rebuilt or or remodeled or have to be rebuilt or remodeled. I said, I shouldn't say rebuilt, but renovated or or remodeled. What happened in the eighties, nineties, and early two thousands, two thousand teens, two thousand, even sometimes two thousand twenties, even in the Houston market, has changed drastically. So I really wanna talk about some of the the recent stuff, and this is not what this topic is about, but Habitat for Humanity Project and and workforce housing. There's a topic on the, uh, on future stuff that is talking about some of the housing, and and I thought it was a really great talking point, that there's gonna be roughly proposed about forty-six homes, eleven of which are gonna be Habitat for Humanity homes, uh, give or take, single-car garage, maybe, we don't know. There's, that's subject to change, with a starting cost of two hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars. That's on flat dirt, pretty much in in an area that the development is gonna be pretty low. Somebody had pointed out that this is a high terrain or or rough terrain area. I don't know if I have that in here or not, probably not, but, um, you know, a rough terrain area. And so we're, they're looking at anywhere between, uh, it's about thirty-two million dollars in developmental costs as far as flat work. So roads, water, sewer. On some of the water stuff, uh, there's a lot of, you know, obviously water's a a tough topic. It's the new gold. There's, it's kinda disappointing, you know, going down that direction of of, you know, what some of headwaters said, you know, we are really trying to negotiate with them. There is a water, Texas Water Code that does dictate a lot of that. You know, it's not, it's not a legal tit-for-tat. You know, we are trying to figure this out. Um, a- and we wanna make sure that that it, that it's in the best, you know, interest of the city. When in, when in, when a water permit is changed arbitrarily, it, we gotta have time to make sure that we look at it the right way, to ensure that our citizens have all the information that they need. So once we can get it out of, out of some of that, we will be addressing those issues. So I put this in here mainly to show the comprehensive plan. You know, we talked about the, the community and the people and what that stands for. And the turnout for the twenty-fifty plan was unbelievable in two thousand and eighteen, you know, pre-COVID. And developing affordable, attainable housing, eighty-nine percent of the people said yes. Bringing new jobs to Kerrville, eighty-eight percent, and I'm gonna talk about that here in a second. I don't wanna ta- just detract away from properly planning for designing construction and maintaining Kerrville's infrastructure, which is at a hundred percent. And that's what these plans are. The water plan, the road pavement study, the master, you know, water utility, you know, the the drainage plan. All of these are are tools that when I got hired on, and and not even before I got hired on, that the team and city council use as benchmarks and basis for decisions that they make. So what is a TERS? Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone. Very simplistically put, 'cause I need a crayon and a big chief pad, a TERS is a geographical representation or boundary of an area that some type of economic development tool can be used, whether that's a Chapter Three-eleven, Chapter Three-twelve, old-school Chapter Three-thirteens, Three-eighties, Three-eighty-ones, you know, there's a whole slew of them out there. In this particular case, it's falling under Chapter Three-eleven code, and I'm not the attorney, so don't quote me on that. But basically, what's gonna be proposed at a certain point in time falls in line with this, but I'm not gonna dive into it yet. We could talk about that on the next one. This is the proposed development. This has been ongoing for a while. Um, the, the area in, in talks of this, the whole area, two hundred-ish plus acres, is gonna, is proposed to be annexed in with about a hundred and one-ish acres being proposed for single-family homes. And these are two-car garages, you know, by the way. So comparing two hundred and seventy-five thousand, which, yes, it could go up, but it's, it can only go up based off of the Chapter Three-eleven, which, correct me if I'm wrong, James, is HUD plus twenty percent. So it can go a hundred and twenty percent of HUD rate or not. So yes, prices will always go up, but they are limited under that Chapter Three-eleven. Majority of homes not to exceed pricing limits set by HUD and TDHCM. So current limit is at two seventy-five. So yes, they will go up. I mean, that's, that's unfortunate. We'll dive, I'll dive into this on the next presentation. That way I'll, I'll split the presentation, Madam Mayor. But that way we can not dive too far into it and and we get the, the pricing piece, so we we can split that up. But the keys that I wanted to really talk about and focus on this is the twenty-fifty plan. Twenty-fifty plan was there for the people. It, it, there was a big process of community engagement, um, spanning multiple councils, multiple mayors, as far as I understood. And so I think what really shows is not just, not just the community, but how do we all come together and figure this out? What we do know is, and and I hate to put Chief McCall on the spot over here, how many officer are we down? I know we lost three or about to lose three in the past two or three weeks. So there's, there's a need, and the question is, is, is this the right need? You know, the rental market is one thing, but homeownership is something completely different. You know, my dad bought a house in in the sixties at fifty thousand dollars at a fifteen percent interest rate. You know, he's still in the same home. Those, those days have have changed unfortunately, and the question is, is what is it gonna change to? We could, and and we did a lot of due diligence on this. Um, I probably have that in here somewhere, but we did a lot of due diligence on this, and what it really boils down to is who's gonna put thirty-two million dollars in infrastructure cost, if that's what it wants to be? This is part of strategic catalyst number eight. Um, I thought that was actually in here. Uh, this is, oh, this is an old one. Um, so it it's part of strategic catalyst number eight. And so it was designated as a catalyst area within, within the twenty-fifty plan. Now, again, that doesn't mean that, that this has to happen. All we can do is present, you know, the information based off of what we're seeing. I apologize, uh, one of the, the presentation actually up to this point is is accurate, but we need to make an adjustment on it. So, Madam Mayor, I'll let y'all continue, and then I can follow up on, on part two if if we need to go down that road. Any questions so far on that, Councilwoman Mayor?
Okay, we are at five A. We are, I believe, we are ready for a motion. I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance number twenty-two-three dash twenty-nine on second reading.
Second.
We have a second. All in favor? Raise your right hand. Opposed? Mr. Garcia? It is three to one. All right, at this, yes? Four. Four. What?
I thought that we have, that y'all had presented something where all the information would be available to council before consideration, like when the PACs came in and when the city manager rightly said that the citizens have all the information we need. And, and we don't have time to absorb all this before it's discussed and voted, and I know y'all don't either.
Well, but we have been working on this for a long time.
But the information, according to the rules that are set up, it should all be available by Friday or Wednesday, I'm sure. I don't know which.
See what she's saying?
We have, we have agreed to, with, uh, with the staff that, uh, we would, we would vote on this, and then we will probably have a special call meeting for the agreement itself that will reflect what has been said tonight.
Um, there was no agreement on that, and also discussions about that was done in executive session. You're now disclosing confidential information to the public.
We have talked about a special session already tonight.
Not an open session. That was in.
We, it was mentioned that we would, we would have a, am I not correct? That it was mentioned that we could have a special se- session tonight?
Yeah, so i- i- and again, it's, it's not necessarily a point of order on there, but i- i- if council goes. So from the city manager's side and just kinda making recommendations, if we should need a special session, the mayor can call a special session at any point in time. We would ideally recommend that should council decide to move forward from that. So yes, you know, I spoke on it just from a, an advice or from a city manager advice perspective, but yeah, that, that's, no.
I was not divulging information that had been talked about.
There were, but just to clarify, there was no agreement to do that. I'm a, I'm a member of council here, and I did not agree to that. So I can tell you there was not an agreement by all of council or even a majority to do that. We've never even taken a vote, and you can't make a decision unless you do it in an open session, so.
Right, I apologize to you for, uh, for saving that, but, um, uh, I think that that's how we would like to handle it. And, um, we'll go on with the next item. Okay, Shelley, if you'll read five B for us, please?
Yes, ma'am. Ordinance. Ordinance number twenty-two-three dash thirty, second reading, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Kerrville, Texas, designating the Wind Ridge Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone TERS. A petition initiated TERS to be named Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone Number Two, Wind Ridge, City of Kerrville, Texas pursuant to Chapter Three-eleven, Texas Tax Code, and generally located north of Olympic Drive and on an approximate one hundred point three-six acre tract of undeveloped property, describing the boundaries of the zone, creating a board of directors for the zone, establishing a tax increment fund for the zone containing, uh, findings related to the creation of the zone, providing a date for the termination of the zone, providing the zone take effect immediately upon passage of the ordinance, providing a separability clause, and providing an effective date. We do have eleven speakers signed up.
All right, let's go ahead with, finish your presentation, and we'll have our speakers.
All right, deja vu. Madam Mayor, council, I'm back. Uh, so all of these didn't change. Um, again, that was, that was, that was my bad. Had, gave them the wrong one. All right, so this is, this is kind of the, uh, focus on the twenty-fifty plan, talking about strategic, strategic catalyst area number eight. Um, again, I wanted to highlight that the Kerrville twenty-fifty plan was two thousand and eighteen. A lot has changed since two thousand and eighteen. I don't need to remind everybody about that. But one of the substantial or significant changes in this area is, is the addition of Hal Peterson Middle School, um, in two thousand and twenty-one. So initially, when this kinda came out, it talked about the twenty-fifty plan with Tybee High School kinda being the anchor, and now we kinda added another anchor. And the thing with young families coming in, myself included, um, you know, we have young twin, you know, savage five-year-olds and, uh, who go to Starkey actually now. And irrelevant, but, but it's important because young families are moving here and they need a place to go. You know, when I got my first starter home, um, yeah, it was a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, thirteen hundred square feet. You know, it was in a different state, um, but that was the military for me. But either way, it was still higher than, you know, than what we had initially anticipated. And when you start looking at a lot of some of the other factors driving this, and again, this is not subjective information. There's, there's tons of information. We could talk about it for days. You know, school districts drive a lot of growth in the area, whether we want it to grow or not. And I always talk about how do we manage the growth so the growth doesn't manage us? And and I, I think Kerrville does such a wonderful job, both from the school side to the city side, to, uh, the university. I mean, all the, all the players involved have done a wonderful job at trying to figure this out and and really tackling some of these challenging decisions. So where do we wanna go? And and the mayor kinda talked about that, and and I wanna caveat some of that with, i- it is not about change. It is not about, you know, wanting to come in and and do anything different. It's, it's just about saying, hey, are we asking the right questions? You know, to to make sure that we have the right answers. And ask ourselves those difficult questions, accept this often difficult unsettling answer, and if we need to make an improvement, let's make an improvement. A couple of things I wanna talk about on this slide, you know, when we talk about where we wanna go, you know, these are challenging topics. So I wanna clarify, the city doesn't own the land. I think it was kinda brought up, but there was some contradictory information in there. The city's not giving away any land. We don't own the land. It's not our land. That's, that's a different client. So I wanted to clarify that. The other thing, too, and and I wanna give Stuart and the team, Stuart Barron a lot of credit, we have a, a, a comprehensive water, um, conservation plan. And our primary source is surface water, and we have five sources of water, which is very different than a lot of other cities, um, who, who only have either one, who have retail or wholesale, depending on how they do it. You know, but offer very challenges. Kerrville is staying on the leading edge of some of these water issues. It doesn't take away from the fact that there is tough and challenging decisions with water. But I, I want the community and the residents to know, even in the short amount of time that I've been here, we have an extremely comprehensive conservation plan, and I think council does a wonderful job at making sure that we stay up to date, and of course, our team makes sure that that information is provided, uh, timely and adequately. So on where do we wanna go? This kind of is, the, the next step of it is, there's opportunities, potentially. There, there's always opportunities, and this is tough questions. Opportunities here, commercial and mixed use, uh, that light blue area, uh, that is gonna be designated commercial. It is not part of the TERS. It is not part of this agreement. That is a separate thing. Sustainable workforce. We talk a lot about the housing piece, and I want, you know, Councilmember Herring had brought up about, about talking about the workforce. You know, who is gonna be the service providers? Who's gonna be the police, the firemen, the nurses? You know, the construction workers building the homes. You know, some of the, the direct and indirect, you know, costs that, uh, I know Gil over at EDC is, has talked a lot about. Sales and use tax, big, mixed beverage tax and hot tax. One of the other clarifying points, too, and and again, I'm, I'm full-on into the deep, deep end um, of unknown chartered territories here. But one of the things that I've been kinda briefed on and and going through my due diligence, you know, getting caught up, we have talked to local builders. We've had, they have at one point tried to figure out. Habitat had tried to, uh, was looking at eight acres in this area to try to get some land that was, I think, actually gonna be either donated, um, by, by, um, Shriner University, uh, at the time. And not sure what happened with that, but those homes are gonna be built by local builders. And that's some of the tough points that makes this area so challenging is, is Lennar, more specifically, yes, they are a for-profit. That, that's, there's no denying that. But they are a develop, a developer and a builder. Where in other cases, we might be able to find other builders, but who's gonna develop the land? Do we have the thirty-two million? We, as a city, do not, we talked about some of the due diligence, and we don't wanna get into that business. Which goes into how do we get there? Some of the discussions and some of the talking points that I've asked, um, eh, you know, ad nauseam, should, should the city purchase the land? Well, if we did, what would that look like? Could we afford it? Yeah, we could afford it, but at what point do we wanna become developers and brokers? We did it in Mont Belvieu, and they were successful, but is that always the case? I agree. I don't think that that's the right answer. Uh, the cost of of development on the flat work alone, again, you're looking at thirty-two million, and every year it goes up. So i- it is an option, but is it the best one? Delay the current project, kinda goes back to, to what? If we delay it, and again, this, this serves at the pleasure of council, uh, we're se- here just to talk about the questions that I've asked objectively, trying to do our due diligence, you know, for the community. Can someone else come in and develop and build? There's a lot of uncertainties. We don't know. I'm gonna say yes, but when? How much? What time? Can they do better? Can they do worse? Land across the state, and when you look at some of these, a lot of these programs are being developed through TERS, through TIFs, through Three-twelves, Three-elevens. You know, we're trying to, you know, cities are getting creative on how they bring in multifamily using economic development incentives, despite whether they bring in sales tax or not. Um, or does council decide to move forward with the TERS and Wind Ridge agreement? These are very tough decisions, and there's a lot of uncertainties and a lot of assumptions that we have to look at this. So for consideration, and again, we are at a finish line. The initial proposal was a seventy-five, twenty-five split, Lennar and the city, for a twenty-seven years TERS. So we say no max to the developer, you know, a cap really hadn't been discussed at that point in time. Before I came on board, the initial one talking about density was twenty-five-foot wide lots with seven hundred-plus homes. And I heard somebody say eight hundred and sixty-eight homes. I'm interested where that, that came in, but it may at one point had been somewhere around that with multiple developments coming in. So what council tasked, tasked our team to do was to negotiate. Hands down, do our job and negotiate, whatever that looks like. Bring the best deal that we possibly can to the table that we're confident in some outcome. And what we ended up coming up with is a sixty-forty split with Lennar and the city, a thirty-years TERS, so adding three years to it. No matter what, initial or proposed, the upfront cost goes to the, to Lennar. They have to put their money where their mouth is from the get-go, you know, which basically means output equals rebate. In order for them to, to. In order for them to, to, to get and recoup some of the cost, they have to perform. We talked about a cap to the developer, but one of the questions that we started asking and, and some of the concerns that we listened to kind of throughout the community was what was our impact to our future M and O rate? We talk, we've heard a lot about subsidization, but we're government. You know, appropriation of funding is always going to be a challenging topic for anything. From quality of life projects, which we'll talk about later, you know, to public safety, public service, you know, to a whole slew of different services, and I'd say products just from a water standpoint, that we have to provide our residents. The county decided not to participate in this, you know, it was what it was, that, things like that happen. The impact to our future M and O rate at a 15 additional percent, so 60-40. We're going to show you some numbers on, on what it looks like. We're a lot more confident with that and regardless, whether it's 100% or not, the fact that we're trying to really look at this is, do we care about the revenue in the M and O and the property tax roll? Or do we care about trying to bring in a product or something that can try to sustain or figure out a workforce? Because we are having officers that have lived in Bernie or Fredericksburg that are leaving. They cannot do it. And whether they want to buy or rent, some of the studies that we're seeing out there is really pointing towards homeownership. People want something that they can own. And I'm, I'm sure there are studies out there that, that can go to the contrary. Again, it's, it's kind of how we perceive things. And then of course, you know, public comment, we've heard, we've heard different side. You know, EIC last night had talked a lot about some of the other side of it. Some of the positive side of trying to figure out, not necessarily directly on this, but just in general, quality of life, what's bringing people here, families, you know, demographics. And then of course, council concern. And I think that was the big directive that we had was go to the table, negotiate. If they don't negotiate, then bring us that. And what we're bringing, which we are confident that we, that with what we have in the city, with what we're doing, with, with the challenges of this, with taking into consideration the 2050 plan, which we've been, you know, ultimately tasked to do, and all of these different things into consideration, to try to bring in some sustainable, long-term, you know, workforce, people. We feel that this, this negotiation and this agreement i- is, is good. Is it perfect? No, it's not. Is anything going to be perfect? No, it's not. But one of the big questions that I kind of ask, and as we go through this, are the knowns better than the unknown sometime? And as we continue to have, you know, we continue to lose folks, we have to kind of make some decisions. Somebody, you know, at one point had talked about wages and increasing wages. You know, in, in a business perspective, that's not always the right answer to just increase wages because then you start having a shift in, in, you know, wage. That's a whole different topic of conversation. So projections. These are based off of a lot of assumptions. But what we try to do is we standardize, you know, standardize these assumptions. So we looked at multiple iterations of growth, tax rates, you know, some unknowns. We wanted to be low growth or current tax rate with low growth to be conservative. So there's a lot of different factors that we took into this to figure out what from a maintenance and operations is sustainable. The city revenue at 40% over the 30 years is estimated and somebody got pretty close. It's 190 million added to the tax rule. Again, this is conservative. You'll, anybody who says they can truly get this down to the penny, I, I would challenge them because that's, that's a lie. Everything we do in government, we're trying to figure out, we're taking actuals, we're trying to put the information out there. And every year we readjust and we, we pivot as needed. By, for FY 2026, you know, the revenues would be 32,000. Again, that's during build-out. Expected eight to 10-year build-out. By 2054, which would be the end of it, looking at 314,000 for a total of 7.1 million. And again, these are, these are kind of assumptions. The thing with the, with the output for Lennar, they're putting $32 million on the table for infrastructure, putting lots on, on, you know, putting lots out there and building. They're projected to hit about 11 million in revenue at 60%. Again, these are conservative and it's subject to, you know, kind of change. However, what is important to note is even though Lennar is recouping their cost on infrastructure, we are also, every time they get it, we get 40% of that 100% to make sure that we can provide services, provide that, you know, the, the maintenance and, and something that we are heavily looking at for fixed asset replacement and maintenance. Oh, and this does not impact our debt fund. So that was one big thing that we wanted to make sure that this was not going to impact our debt fund. Any questions? Lots of questions, but any questions? So let, let me do one more caveat and I apologize. Some of the more speculative unknowns is with that commercial property there, and we talked about opportunity, that infrastructure is not shovel-ready. So with this development, ideally that infrastructure would become shovel-ready, which would then add some more jobs with the 490 roofs. So somebody had pointed out about two and a half to three and a half people, depending on you're looking at jobs versus TCEQ. So three and a half people per home, you're looking at jobs. You're looking at, you know, some of those other employment opportunities. So it is kind of that economic, you know, cycle of work, live, play, where you do have doors, you do have rooftops, you do have the ability to add some commercial. Not to say that the commercial could not be developed if these homes didn't come in, it just might take a little bit longer. The other thing about water real quick, since I just had a flashback on it. This is part of our CCN and CCNs are very challenging because Houston doesn't have them. Houston's have muds. We don't want to do a mud here. We don't even want to talk about muds. But Houston has muds. We have CCNs. So what does that mean based off of kind of new state legislation? If it doesn't go in, there's 200 acres there potentially that if somebody doesn't like their money, they could come in and throw $32 million in infrastructure, put in 500 or 700 homes, however they want, in the county, and we have to provide them water no matter what, because that is a CCN requirement and they don't even have to come into the city. And it's a donut where, where indirectly, there would be some services that would naturally be there, whether that's mutual aid. Again, there, there are a lot of what ifs, but CCNs, I, I like talking about them because they are very challenging with some of our new state laws on annexation, disannexation and everything else, that even if they had the ability, they could come in and do it regardless. So those are some things to consider over the years. And please, as council, I'll take any questions.
Counsel, standing at the moment?
Do we have an updated financing, finance plan that's supposed to be with this, as an exhibit on this ordinance?
Do we have, is it, is it as an exhibit?
It is. It's listed as an exhibit.
Well, the, the changed one due to the now different percentages that you're giving us?
Do what? I, I'm going to go out on a limb and say, probably not. But don't quote me on that one. I'd rather be conservative on, on the not side. Because, you know, when, you know, we had Veterans Day last Friday. A lot of this stuff literally got wrapped up Thursday night at 10 o'clock at night. You know, I appreciate James's flexibility on that. You know, we're both wrangling our savages, you know, dealing with that. So this, this, this came up to the wire. And, and so really tonight, and again, we, there's a lot of questions, we know, there's a lot of speculation, we know. Really what we wanted to bring to council tonight was the objective side. Council tasked us with, with negotiating with Lennar. What I can say is Lennar and the city negotiated in good faith. We are comfortable with the terms that were presented. We know there are some contractual semantics that, that need to be addressed and hashed out. When I had kind of mentioned the idea of the special session, I don't think it was agreed upon, but we would recommend a special session simply to make sure that council has all of the development agreements, has the information and some, you know, to get some of the questions asked and to be able to hash some of those out. And I'll let the attorneys take over.
I just wanted to say I did create an updated preliminary plan. Yes, based on the, the numbers that we agreed to, I did.
Okay, you did. Thank you.
Thank you.
And is that new finance plan, is that assuming that the tax rate, our current tax rate is going to be the same or is that?
Julie said she can present it right now, so if you want to take a minute, she can come out and, and talk about it. But to answer your question, we ran a bunch of scenarios. We assumed tax rate reductions. We assumed, we, we tried not to assume a stable tax rate because we know that that's not necessarily realistic. So we ran a bunch of different scenarios and the changes over that time were nominal, but Julie said she's going to.
Okay, if she'll present, I'll, I'll wait to get that presentation. What percent of the houses that are proposed for this development? It's my understanding that, of course, we've had negotiations for this whole time, so stuff could change that I don't know about still. What percent of the houses are going to be within that what's quoted to be affordable house range? Not all of them, not all, about 500 of them are, right?
So all of those, all of those are going to fall under the Chapter 311 umbrella. So if those houses get built, you know, assuming it's 61 to 72 homes per year and the HUD rate and everything, plus the, the cap on the 275 plus whatever HUD, then they'll fluctuate and adjust from there.
Okay. My question is more specific to that. It's out of the entire 500 houses that are going to be developed over this time period, what percentage of the 500, just rounding up, are going to be in that range that they're claiming to be affordable?
I, I don't know the answer to that.
It's 100%. That's, that's part of.
All of them are going to be.
All, that's part of the agreement is where all of the homes in there have to be sold by this with that price.
Just making sure, because at one point I think it was a certain percentage, so thank you for that.
Yeah, there's percentages on other parts of it, but the, as far as that affordability that you're talking about, that's 100%.
And can you clarify what the percentage is in the other?
No, there's percentages about the, the lot widths, for instance. I mean, everybody's talking about 30-foot lots.
Oh, right, right, right.
That's what I mean.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
And then real quick, Julie's, Julie's getting her stuff ready. I apologize on that one. On the ordinance, you know, obviously, you know, getting all this, we want to make sure y'all have the right information, which again, why we would, you know, if it pleases council to potentially set a date for a, a special session at some point. On page three of the ordinance, fourth whereas from 27 years to 30 years. Again, not much of a difference on the three, the three years. The standard TERZs are typically, you know, 30 years or higher. Fifth whereas from 75% to 60%. So again, initially it was 75% going to Lennar, now it's 60%. Eighth whereas from October 11th, 2050 and changed to November 13th of 2053. Page six, section eight, changed from September 11th, 2050 to November 14th of 2053. Section nine changed from 100% to 60%, which again aligns with the 60%. So those were, were the.
Are you expecting us to follow along with you? Do we have printed versions of this? I mean, we're proposing so many amendments to it now and it's not in our packet.
So they are substantial changes. You know, we, with the, with the presentation, talking about the 60-40. So it went from 75, 25 to 60-40, so.
But my, my question was, do you have a printed version of this that we could see? Do, or?
You want to pass this around?
An updated version of this document, because what's in front of us right now is insufficient to what we're supposed to be voting on for tonight now.
From, from what, from what I, again, I'll, I'll consult with the legal side. From the changes, you know, just like any ordinance or, you know, you guys can amend those ordinances based off that information. Should it, please, counsel?
Why don't, I tell you what, why don't we take a six-minute break while we're waiting on Julie to come and present and stretch our legs? So at 8:02, we will recess for six minutes.
Get your programs, get your programs. Can't tell the players without a program.
It is 8:11, and we will call the meeting back to order. Julie, do you have some numbers for us?
I do, and I'm going to apologize because this was in the original presentation, and we were rerouting it today. Pulled it out and put it at more high level. So you have in front of you the 60-40 split. Again, we've worked this forward, backwards, and upside down, whether it's working with the growth rate, what's that going to do? The tax rate, what's that going to do? And the advice that we received from Hilltop is typically when they do a TERS, you use your current tax rate with a conservative growth rate, and that kind of balances that over years. And so we did some calculations over multiple years, just to see based on different factors. There wasn't a huge difference on the bottom line, no matter which scenario we used. So we followed their advice and went on using this scenario. So that's why we came to the growth rate at 1%, which we know is conservative, and the current tax rate, which we know will change as we add new value. So there's no magic eight ball on this. This is using assumptions that we know to be true, and then using other things that we know to be true right now. So not being able to predict what might happen 10 years down the road. So that's what you have in front of you, and these numbers tie out to what was presented to you earlier as far as total year-over-year city revenues, based on the 40%, and then total year-over-year revenues projected for the developer. Happy to answer any questions if you have specific ones on.
Why did you choose this font?
Well, you know.
It's so easy to read, that's the problem.
Yeah, it is.
So I'm sorry, to clarify, did you say that this is assuming the same tax rate that we have right now? It stays in effect the entire time?
It is.
Okay. And now I know the estimated collection rate on the bottom is 98.5%. Now, is that an average collection rate, just at the end of a year usually?
So we budget 98% for as far as budget for property tax. That's what we budget every year. We usually collect better than that, because we have multiple pieces of property taxes, you know. We have the current rate, I mean, the current what's owed this year, and then we have what was due from back taxes. And so we combine those for our total collection rate. So that's why oftentimes we will go over our collection rate, because we budget for just the current. And then as far as collectability, we use the 98%.
Okay, so all these, very conservative with the growth rate at 1%, estimated collection rate 98.5%.
That's right.
And assuming the tax rate as of today stays the exact same. So we're looking at a minimum of $10.7 million being refunded to the developer. But again, minimum, as a conservative number, it could go up from that.
That's correct. It's going to depend on valuations, just like anything else, that we have to factor into that.
Okay, so is this by reference our new exhibit for the lieu of the.
Right, and I will send this to you electronically as well, so that you have it that way. And we'll go back and attach it, and I'll just verify everything that makes to the presentation that you were given, to make sure of that.
Sure, okay. Has Lennar seen this copy, or did they help with this, or was this just the city's part?
Well, it was internal, but there was a lot of back and forth. So they're very aware of what those.
Okay, so they've seen, okay, thank you. So my question's on the finance plan. Thank you, Mayor. I'll wait for the rest of mine until after public comments.
Thank you. Okay, any other comments, questions? Okay, let's go ahead with our comments. If for any reason what you're saying now is basically the same thing that you said before, if you would not share it again, if someone else is saying what you need to say, we've got 11 people, and at four minutes apiece, that's a long time, so.
Did you want four minutes? Did you want four minutes or three minutes, Mayor?
I would prefer three minutes. Counsel, what, do we have a motion for three minutes?
I'll move.
Second. A second, all right, let's vote on that. Three minutes, opposed?
There's four minutes on the last one, so stay consistent, you know.
But a lot of this, I think, is going to be repetitive in what they're saying. So let's, we're going to do three minutes, so if you'll reduce if you need to. If you're repeating, please don't. And if someone else is saying exactly what you need to say, then just reference them, please. Okay, let's go with the first one.
Ronald Carroll?
You don't have to, you could say I pass.
That's why I can play the two pages.
There you go, go for it.
But you are at three minutes, and we will cut you off.
Okay, that's fine. I can't even find it in here, but one of the main things I wanted to say is Lennar Homes doesn't need the City of Kerrville. I believe they think that they can make money building these houses and developing this property. Now, if they can get taxes on, five million dollars, they're going to take it. Because they're going to hedge, that's, we're their hedge if things don't go well. And again, I say, they're going to buy down the mortgage to qualify these people. And I've seen it happen, when those roll up, they get out of the houses and you see foreclosures. Right on time.
Thank you, sir.
Ed Hamilton?
I think he went home.
Nikki Keynes?
Good evening, Nikki Keynes, I live in the city. I will repeat myself for just a second, because I believe it bears repeating that I don't believe that the city should be in a public-private partnership, and that Lennar Homes being offered, or the contract being that a PPD, that they are getting way more than the city does. And based on the facts that were presented by Mr. Carroll and Mr. Hamilton, I hadn't given it any thought, the fact that how many current people here, whether it's a realtor, a contractor, or anybody else, they're not getting any money out of this. It's the builder. I also wanted to say that on page two of this agreement, and it is the old agreement, I'm assuming it's the same, it says, whereas evidence was received and presented at the public hearing on October 10th, and in favor. The wording bothers me, because it means it's a pre-gone conclusion. We've heard people speak tonight, we've heard people speak a month ago. I know for a fact that I and others have sent you information and emails, all kinds of information on the background of this particular builder. I have nothing personally against them, but if I was to read 94 pages, 94 pages of negative comments from purchasers, not 10 years ago, we're talking over decades. If I were to read 94 pages of comments from purchasers where they felt like they had been had on the purchase, where something was not complete and couldn't get it complete as a repair after they moved in, I would say we need to back it up. And as I said before, they already have one development going. We don't have any proof that anyone is actually going to buy them. I would say, again, could we just back this up, take a pause? Don't give them a second bite at the apple until they've proven themselves on the first development. Thank you.
Gail Wright?
She left, I believe.
Thomas McComick?
He may have left.
Adrian Larson? George Baroudi?
He's here.
George Baroudi, 1616 Glen Road. So a couple of things, one was changed already, which was that 100%, which of course, you guys have never approved, so it was wrong to begin with. But at least now, I guess it's going to be corrected to be 60%. The other is, it says in section four that this will not impact the city's general fund. I would kind of debate that a little bit, in the sense that when you build a subdivision like this, you're bringing on not just tax revenue, but you're bringing on service expense costs. And those service expense costs are still coming, yet you're not actually going to bring the requisite number of dollars into the general fund. So it actually does impact your general fund. I understand the but-for concept, but it really doesn't apply when it's for housing. Funding for projects, section five says, will be subject to future city council approval. This is actually incorrect. In a TERS, either the board, the TERS board, or the city council can approve projects unilaterally, on their own. It doesn't have to come back. When you approve the TERS creation, you're giving implicit authority to the board to do so. The other is, section seven talks about council shall appoint Lennar selections to the board. So what you're really doing, just to be clear, is you're giving Lennar the authority to fill the board, however they see fit. An added authority that comes with a TERS that's being set up by petition, as opposed to being done by the city, is that they affect, tax code in a couple of places grants the board the authority to do whatever it takes to implement the project plan, which in this case is developing houses, I guess. And they can do so with land use restrictions and essentially zoning. And that zoning that occurs inside of that TERS stays with the property. It supersedes the city's zoning. So you might want to look into that. That's tax code 311010, or 311008. You might want to research that a little bit before you give away the form. And it says, okay, that's it there. A couple of times, we've mentioned the affordable housing aspect of this. Affordable housing is never defined as the amount of money here, but one thing that is clear in this in this community, that AMFI, or whatever we call it, may be 85,000 whatever for the area, which is including Kirk County. But if anybody studies the school district statistics, nearly 60% of our students qualify for subsidized meals. What that means is their economic situation in their household is closer to 50,000. Those are the families. I understand police have families, but 60% of our student population, our working families, can't qualify for, I mean, they do qualify for subsidized meals, which means they're nowhere near being able to afford these homes. So the target market that you're looking for isn't the stated market that we're talking about. All right, that's all, thanks.
Thank you.
All right, I'll try to keep mine brief. Just as a general rule of thumb, I usually oppose public-private partnerships, because it always puts taxpayers on the hook for anything that goes wrong, for any losses of whatever the private corporation is, in this case, Lennar. And I have big concerns about the TERS board being unaccountable to we, the taxpayers. And I think a lot of ways, the TERS board might be unaccountable to y'all as the city council, too, so that's concerning. Water is a big concern with this development. I just don't see how, I know we're going to stage three drought restrictions, but with the history of where our water supply is going, and how it's getting sucked up, and the droughts and everything, adding roughly 500 homes is not going to make things better at all. I'll just kind of repeat real quick what other people have said. You know, the low quality of Lennar Homes is concerning. And, you know, the concerns of not allowing local people to be able to be hired for this, whether it's plumbers, contractors, electricians, whatever the case might be, why are we outsourcing when we could be using local folks and growing jobs here in town? There's a lot of comments I've read on social media with concerns about this. And I know folks aren't here necessarily to speak for or against. Mostly what I'm seeing on social media from people here in Kerrville is that they're opposed to this project. So I would encourage y'all to vote it down. Thank you.
Thank you.
Avala Pucio?
Mayor, counsel. Many citizens have spoken on Lennar's development as a TERS, and there are a couple of reasons why this contract would only do more harm than good. Should I start with the countless battery views, just to go back for previous home buyers from this company of poorly built homes? And this goes over many, many years, which creates the question, does this company truly serve the modern-day home buyer? Next, the TERS was presented as benefiting not only the city, but also the home buyer. However, in the research I have done, I have found this isn't necessarily the case. As stated previously by other citizens, even with fair market value and public, many incentives offered to home buyers, residents would be paying the same tax rate as the city and county, with the majority of the funds going to the developer, instead of to the cost of services given to the zone, which will indirectly affect the citizens of Kerrville and the taxpayers. Also, Lennar has set a price on the homes, of which they need for the development. Even if they lowered the price and gave rebates and incentives, they will earn back the actual price of the homes in the end of this TERS contract. So are the homes going to actually be affordable to the citizens of Kerrville? As stated in the Kerrville 2050 Plan, page 127, the lack of inventory in the affordable categories, affordable home categories, will begin to affect not only the growth of the population of Kerrville, but also the health of its economy. The health of the economy goes hand-in-hand with the affordable housing. If our goal is a healthy economy and affordable homes, then Lennar's development in Kerrville should be seriously reconsidered. If the homes being developed do not benefit the home buyers who are residents of Kerrville, then it cannot benefit the city. We are not building homes to benefit the developer. We are building homes to benefit our citizens and families who live here. I think we can do better for our citizens and for our city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bruce Strakey?
Bruce Strakey, 821 Earl Garrett Street. I was dumbfounded when I first saw this proposal. And I've been looking back at the housing pieces I've written, and the first one that I can find that applies to this issue didn't involve Lennar. It involved a different project for the same issue of affordable housing, and I wrote it in 2019. It was in June of 20, October of 2019. And one of the things that strikes me from that piece, from 2023, is not only how many of us have all been working on this project, and another council before us, and I think two city managers before us, but how little has changed, and yet the world has totally changed. Kerrville is still an inventive and exciting place to live, and it's why we all chose to live here. But we still have more than 50% of our renters. More than 50% of our renters are paying over 30% of their income toward rent. In fact, it's closer to 50% as well. And if we look at the housing study from 2019, the number-one priority in that study was the folks who are below 80%. Not over 100, 100 to 120. And we have failed to meet the needs that were the number-one thing that Bill Blackburn brought to our attention with the 2019 housing study. And yes, this is in the 2050, and so are the renters. And we're using a tool that is giving a significant amount of money, more money than we have ever offered any other developer that I'm aware of, to one of the largest home builders in the U.S. They make over 21% on delivered houses. That doesn't include the title work, that doesn't include the loans. And we're giving them, well, now, I guess, we're giving them at least $16 million. Five million from the EIC. the EIC, three of it for regional infrastructure. That's, we all know that that's a joke. It's not regional. That detention pond is not regional infrastructure. All the rest of that, and that's what, $8 million in infrastructure there, plus the $32 million? So this is $40 million of infrastructure for 500 yachts lots? That's $80,000 a yacht, a lot. I keep saying yachts. Why am I doing that? It's late. I'm sorry, folks. We need this housing. We need more moderately priced rental housing for those folks under 100%, under 80%. We need all of it. But we are putting a huge amount of eggs in this one basket. And it's interesting that not a single private citizen has stood here in the last six months and said, we should do this.
Thank you.
Pablo Brinkman.
Well, I'm glad I followed Bruce.
Pablo Brinkman, 3928 Oak Park Drive. My memory, it's late. Untrue on a lot of things. I think even read in the record, those of you who watch YouTube, we had many private citizens, actually the largest employer spoke in favor of this with Peterson. So I think that there's, we go back to, I want to go back to Dalton on his presentation about, and I spoke to somebody at Habitat today. So Habitat for Humanity, we'd all say that's probably designed as an affordable alternative. They're at $275,000 for the homes that they're doing. I won't quote this person, but that is as tight as they can do. And that is using a lot of, dare I say, free labor. That is using a lot of discounted labor, labor sources, as well as discounted materials. So Lennar, if we look at this, and I've gone on, this is a 10-year-plus project. It's going to be 18 months before it goes vertical, just with the flatwork. And so I would say that Lennar is not one of the largest home builders, if not the largest home builder in the U.S., for no reason. And so they're not going to do something that is not going to make sense for them, economic sense, viable sense, building things for the city. And so let's look at what this is long-term. Mr. Garcia brought up about the TERS, and Mr. Broody did as well about appointed boards. And I think, hopefully Mr. Broody will, he's urged us to look at a lot of things, and he'll do a little bit too about who's on the TERS board, how it's appointed, how the vehicle is instructed. You've got state center on it. You've got staff on it. You've got all these people. And Lennar can only, only get a reimbursement of that if it's followed by the letter of the law. And that is what's before you. So I would encourage that, well, there's a lot of things being thrown out here, and I'm sure there's a lot of people saying Pablo is saying a lot of things, too. Hopefully, I'm telling everything that is truthful tonight for a reason. This follows the Kerrville 2050 Plan. This follows tight, just, you know, you talked about hundreds of hours. There's thousands of hours into this from city staff, from things like this. I said last time on our last reading, you know, if we're not going to say we're open for business, we're closed for business, it's going to change the outcome of Kerrville. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
And that is the end of the citizen speakers.
We left Mr. Brinkman speaking a moment ago, and he wasn't on there. So we will let you speak.
Barbara Ferguson. You know, it's interesting, Bruce and I, during different meetings, we've disagreed on a lot of different things. But Bruce is spot on tonight. And I know the council respects Bruce and his experience and his knowledge of Kerrville. He is so spot on. And he's not in bad company. I have an article from October of 2019 where our mayor at the time, Bill Blackburn, made this statement. And the article was a Q&amp;A with Bill Blackburn about Kerrville housing. And he says, "I hope we don't have one of the big builders of low-quality homes come in here and do large housing tracts." Exactly what we're looking at. Kerrville doesn't need these kinds of homes at these kinds of prices. We need apartments. That's entry-level housing nowadays. Now, a lot of us are old school. Everybody has the dream of a home. I didn't have one until I'd been married six years. I didn't have one when I was at a 20, you know, flipping burgers job straight out of college and hadn't got my real job yet. Apartments are entry-level housing. As we increase the number of apartments in town, we're going to bring down the price of apartments, which then in turns brings down the price of entry-level homes. It helps everybody. And the apartments can be spaced around town. We don't need to have a huge complex in one place that then gives us infrastructure issues and that changes the whole tenor of our town. So I would encourage you to take the advice of Mr. Hamilton, who spoke earlier, who is very knowledgeable, Mr. Carroll, who has extensive experience, who has watched these kinds of developments go into foreclosures when the rates adjust. And also, you know, one point that hasn't been brought out, I went on the Lennar Facebook page, sales site, and started looking as if I was a prospective client, and found out that the price of that home that was advertised at $282,999 was only good if you financed through Lennar. If you didn't, it was a $25,000 increase in the price of the home. So I would wonder tonight, when those home prices were given, was that the price of the home or the price with the discount? If you didn't need financing, if you wanted to get a loan somewhere else, would that price be increased by $25,000? And in that case, we're just nowhere in the ballpark of affordable housing. Please, please. We do not need to subsidize this. It's bad enough that you passed the first one. This is adding insult to injury. Thank you.
Thank you.
And that's the end of the citizen speakers.
Okay. Thank you. All right, Council. Do we have any further questions that need to be asked? Roland?
Want me to start?
Start.
Okay. We have an Exhibit A with the ordinance to adopt and create the TERS. Exhibit A is supposed to be a petition by the landowner, the owner of the land, saying that they want this TERS to be created. Exhibit A is not that. Exhibit A is the petition to request the annexation, which we just dealt with on the previous item that was adopted. We saw, and I was provided by staff, the correct Exhibit A that is supposed to be attached to this ordinance. That is the petition for the TERS, yet it hasn't been provided in this document to us. It hasn't been provided to the public. So to me, that questions the validity of the notice and what we're doing here tonight. This isn't, I don't know who you want to put that on. On page six of the ordinance, at the very top, it says, "Lennar may select each of the board members, and following their submission of their names to the city council, council shall appoint Lennar selection to the board." Lennar is maintaining full control over the entire TERS board that's going to manage the tax dollars that are going to be refunded to them. It's "shall," not "should," not "may." If we're going to change that, and if it's for some reason not supposed to be that way, then again, that's another deficiency in this ordinance. We've already shown that we have a new finance plan that's supposed to be attached. I think it's what Exhibit D, probably. Exhibit, yep, Exhibit D. We just got that today. Again, not provided in the notice, not provided in this packet. You know, we're talking about subsidizing. It is subsidizing. Let's not hide behind any other type of word of appropriations or anything. It's subsidizing. Through this TERS and the TIF that's going to be created, the tax increment fund, we're going to be giving them what we see now about, at the conservative point, let's round up a little bit, $11 million. That's going to fluctuate, and I'm sure it's going to be higher than that. Add on the additional $5 million that EIC approved for, quote, "regional infrastructure." We're now over $15 million given back to this developer. The county had this about a month ago. I think they made the right decision to not move forward with this. I don't know what was discussed in their executive session, but clearly it was different than what we've discussed because they came out with a completely different vote than we had on first reading, and we'll see what happens this time. Through this proposal, we are, they are taking, and we're allowing, actually, we're giving them tax revenue that we would otherwise receive, and yet we are still having to provide the same level of services. We can't discriminate to one area just because we created TERS. We're going to have to provide the exact same services to those citizens who are living there. And yet, the city does not have the full tax revenue that we would otherwise receive because it's going to be pushover to the developer. Lennar, with all due respect, you've come to us, you've put a proposal to us. Thank you. But Lennar is not a nonprofit. They wouldn't be doing this unless they want, they were going to be able to make money off of it. They're not coming out of here just to say, we're going to do this, and we may lose money, and we're going to break even. They wouldn't put this proposal to us unless that was the case. We can do better, and we should do better, to accomplish the goal of actually providing affordable and attainable housing. This is not the project to do that. We've seen that. We've heard it from citizens. I'm going to piggyback off of every piece of information that they've provided. Again, I don't see a private citizen here telling us to vote in favor. So I urge all my colleagues not to, and I will be voting against it. Thank you.
Michael, or Dalton, is there anything you would want to address?
I can address the board issue a little bit. When it's a petition for a TERS, the board has to, board members have to be a property owner or representative of the property owner. So Lennar has the right to appoint the board. The board will be subject to the development agreement that you all will enter into. The city council will be a party to that, the TERS board, as well as Lennar. So they'll be constrained by the development agreement.
That we don't have yet. So they'll be constrained by a document we have not seen yet, just to be clear.
But as discussed earlier, this sets up the construct of the TERS. If the development agreement never comes, then the TERS, you can repeal this ordinance. This TERS, this creation document merely sets up the framework for the TERS, sets up the way it will operate pursuant to a development agreement.
Anything else from anybody?
Do you want to say something, James? You want to?
Thank you. Again, James McKnight. Just address a few things. Yes, the board members, that is statutory, that the election of the board comes from the property owners because the board is so constrained. The development agreement is agreed upon and passed by you, the city council. The preliminary and finance plan is passed by you, the city council. So those two things are in place, and they can't approve anything except what comes through that. So when the project comes through, if they build a road that they say, we'd like reimbursement for this road, the only thing the board can approve is if it's in the development agreement and it's in the project and financing plan. That's their role. That's why the statute says it's the property owner, because that's all their job is. They're not, they don't have broad authority past that. The authority comes from you. Also, talk about the money coming to Lennar. There's a lot been made about $11 million, $17 million, whatever it is, coming to Lennar. The reason the money is coming to Lennar is because, over 30 years, by the way, not in a lump sum, is because they're lowering the cost of the home. You're not subsidizing Lennar. You're subsidizing the cost of the home. You're trying to lower the cost of the home. Lennar is agreeing to keep the costs down, and that's why the money is there. The money is coming back because of the infrastructure we put in and to lower the cost of home. It's not enriching us more than we already were. It's because you're subsidizing those costs. And I think that's really important because it seems like it's just this handout to Lennar. It's not. And the last thing I'd say is, because this is a "but for," we've talked about this before, the TERS is supposed to be a "but for" tool, meaning there is no revenue. They talk about the revenue giving away, the tax revenue that's going back to the city. That only exists if Lennar builds the home. No one's building the home. Lennar is the one that's there to say, we'll put forth the $32 million to build the home. Without that revenue, there's no revenue. You're comparing it as if there were already going to be revenue there. That's not true. We're creating, Lennar is creating that revenue. And if the costs go up, if that 10.9 goes up, so does the revenue to the city, because that percentage goes up for them as well. So I think it's important to remember that that revenue that's being created is by the homes that Lennar is putting on the ground. Thank you.
Okay, we have Joe.
Just real quick. It's true, we haven't seen a stream of people come to these meetings and plead with us to do this. But I have spoken privately with many younger people about this idea, and I've struggled with this vote for a long time. Look, we five are volunteers. We're going to do our best. We're going to do our best with the information we have and the judgment we have to try to make Kerrville a better place. You know, there's a chance this will. We haven't really talked about that. There's a chance that this will help young families get a house, okay? And that's the thing that really hasn't been spoken about by the organized opposition. Those people aren't here tonight because they're at home with their kids, or they're trying to, they're trying to go to a second shift at a job. You know, those people need representation, too, not just the organized opposition. Those people need representation, too. And, look, y'all pay me $25 a meeting, and you're getting your money's worth a night. Because what I would like to do next, Mayor, if it's agreeable, is make a motion that we adopt ordinance number 2023-30 on second reading.
A second. We have a motion, and we have a second. All in favor, please raise your right hand. We have three, four. Opposed, we have one, Mr. Garcia. Thank you all for your comments. Thank you all for your thoughts. We appreciate it. Council, thank you. Staff, thank you. There's been hours and hours and hours put in on this, and I know it's not done. There's a whole lot more to go. But we have a path now. And that's, we needed a path. So we're on our way. Okay, let's move on to 6A.
Request for variance from distance requirement applicable to sale of alcoholic beverages per Section 10-3 Code of Ordinances for the property addressed at 2100 East Main Street, The Hills Winery, Shrinery University. There is no public speaker signed up. However, this is a public hearing.
Thank you.
All right, Drew.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request for a variance for The Hill Winery at 2100 East Main Street. They are partnering with Shrinery University on their property for the winery. Because they are within 300 feet of Tom Daniel's Elementary, they are required to come to council for a request for the variance. Based on our ordinance, council does have the discretion based on whether this is or is not in the best interest of the public, constitutes a waste or inefficient use of land, creates an undue hardship on the applicant, or does not serve for its intended purpose, and is not effective or necessary. I know the applicant is here. If you have any questions about their project, I'd be pleased to answer any questions before or after the public hearing.
Where's the applicant? I'm sorry, I just was wondering. You don't have to speak unless you want to.
Okay, before we bring her up, any questions from council for Drew at the moment? Not yet. Okay, let's go ahead and hear from the applicant before we open the public hearing.
Hello, I am Kelly Hagemeier, Chief Operating Officer of Kerrville Hills Winery. We are looking to do a partnership with Shrinery University, kind of one that mimics what they did at the trailhead. And so we've already installed a five-acre vineyard, and then this tasting room. And so we've already installed a five-acre vineyard and then this tasting room that we'll have up there. We're working towards having a certificate program that can help to get people into the workforce that's needed in the wine industry because we're seeing as wine industry grows that there is a deficit there for the workforce. And so this will just be one more avenue for us to kind of integrate into that certificate program.
Thank you. Any questions for her, council?
So did you say you've already integrated some parts of this business that you're asking for a variance for right now? Like it's in existence right now?
Yeah, so we're going to move forward with the certificate program. And so this is just one other aspect that we were hoping to be able to do. And just for clarification with the distance, so the entrance is actually on East Main Street, but the full property is 30 acres and so the backside of it is the, is a solar area. And so because it's property line to property line where we are encroached, I guess you would say. But if you go along the actual road, it's much further than the 300 feet.
And it is fenced. The property is fenced.
Yes, it is fenced, yes. And there's no public access from that side, from the singing voice side.
Okay. Any other questions for her? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, at 8:51, we will open the public hearing. Anyone?
George Bury 66 and Glen Road. That picture right up there is plugging reuse water for you, just in case you want to know. See those bright green spots? Those are watered by reuse water and look at everything else, just saying.
And the whole property except for the house is replanted water. Because there's also the community garden up there and so everything except for the lab and the Weston house itself, the vineyard, everything is all replanted water.
Okay. At 8:52, we will close the public hearing. Any further comments or questions?
There's a bit of historical irony here in that the Weston family ran a saloon until prohibition. And I think they would be pleased if someone else was serving wine at that facility. Motion, Mayor?
I think Roman has a comment or?
Two questions for Mr. Paxton. Do you have an average of how many other variances we've given in this aspect?
I do not.
Do we have, I mean, I think we've done one before, at least since I've been on maybe?
That may be it, that I'm aware of.
Okay. Do you know what would happen, and help me understand this if I'm misunderstood, if, and I'm not saying this is going to happen, but if it were to be denied and they are already operating, I guess the variance is to ask for an exception because, as I understand, they're already operating that way, so?
No, the variance is for the city to sign off on their Texas Alcoholic Beverage Commission license.
Right.
They are currently working with Shriner on an educational certificate and that's-
It's going to be done later. That's not with this.
Currently have a vineyard which does not require a license.
Right, okay.
This is for the winery and tasting room, which requires the alcoholic beverage program.
Perfect, that's exactly, yep, clarifies it. Thank you. All right.
Okay, I believe we're ready for a motion.
I would move that we approve the request for variance as described in the agenda.
Do you have a second? Thank you. All in favor, rise your hand please. And it is approved for to one. 7A.
Ordinance number 2023-31, an ordinance emitting ordinance number 2003-08, which created a planned development district on an approximate 798.7 acre tract of land, generally located northeast of the intersection of State Highway 16 and Interstate Highway 10. Set amendments to update the concept plan and the land use table included with ordinance number 2003-08 to combine various residential lot sizes into a single area parcel and to alter the layout of the golf course area and commercial areas, establishing a penalty and effective date and providing other matters relating to the subject. We do have three citizen speakers signed up, however, this is a public hearing.
Drew?
Thank you, Mayor. This is an amendment to the 2003-08 Planned Development District. I'll go through a few things in the slides as well. This is part of the Strategic Catalyst Area Number Six, which includes the intersection of I-10 and Highway 16 for the frontage area. Here's the current zoning, is the planned development district. Here's future land use plan. You can see the cutout portion is part of that strategic catalyst area. This is the previous concept plan that was approved in 2003. The new concept plan keeps the same density of the number of housing units and the acreage of commercial. They did rearrange some of those commercial areas. They are working to integrate the different size housing lots throughout the project. Got a couple comparison slides here. As you can see on the left-hand side, the different lot sizes were isolated in smaller neighborhoods, whereas the new proposal does integrate the various housing, lot sizes throughout the project. They did flip the hotel site on the other side of the road, as you can see on the right-hand side, and they did add an additional four acres of commercial within the property that would actually facilitate uses for the neighborhood. There's a couple renderings that they provided. There's the overall site plan again. The acreage and the density has not changed and the balance of the amendments, and I've got an example here. First and foremost, they were looking to update the concept plan to their project since they are purchasing this from previous owners. Updated the land use areas and the land use table to the current zoning code. Modernized the development setbacks and screening requirements, again, from the 1999 zoning code to the 2019 zoning code. Reinforced the water-wise landscaping throughout the development. Removed the minimum size for the hotel. Updated the sign package with reference to the current code and the hotel will have the option for an off-premise site or off-premise signage at the front of the project. With that, I'd be pleased to answer any questions before or after the public hearing. I know the applicant is here to speak as well.
Any questions for Drew before we hear from the applicant?
Just to be, just to be clear, the original plan was adopted and approved in 2003.
That's correct.
20 years ago.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay. If the applicant would like to speak to us?
Mayor Ickner, members of the city council, thank you for your time tonight. I know it's been a long evening. My name is Jim Boydin and I represent the group who is looking to acquire this property and I'm here as an authorized representative of the current owner as well. A little bit of background on my career and what I've done. I received my bachelor's in landscape architecture and environmental planning from Utah State University in 1998 and went on to get a master's degree in real estate development from Columbia University in New York in 2004 and have been involved in master plan community development here in the southwest, primarily Arizona and Utah, for my entire career doing projects of this scale. For the last year, we've been looking for a project in Texas from Montgomery County, north of the woodlands over by Blue Jack National, to Austin, to Dallas and here in Kerrville. And when we first were introduced to this project, the first question we had was, "Why hasn't this been built yet?" What is the issue and why is it still available? It's raw land. And the site plan looked very much like what we were interested in building. It's what we do, it's our business model. And we made a trip down to Kerrville and toured the site with the broker of the property and fell in love, not only with the site, but with the community. It's a wonderful place to be. There's tremendous charm and heritage and history that we really, really are falling in love with. But as we compared the site plan with the actual site, we identified a number of inefficiencies. The golf course layout, for instance, doesn't really respond well to the topography. Some of the grading of some of the holes of the original plan would require us to cut into the hillsides 50 to 80, even in one case, 100 feet. Cuts which would be visible for as far as the eye can see. And we realized then that we needed to push and pull a little bit on the uses that had been previously approved by the city two decades ago. What we came to understand after a meeting with city staff, and they've been wonderful to work with, by the way. You have a tremendous staff.
Thank you.
And I'm grateful for that because they've been very helpful and understanding and patient with us as we've tried to understand Texas development laws. The zoning ordinance that was written for this piece of land was written specifically to accommodate the original site plan with zero margin for latitude on how you implement. So by rerouting the golf course a little bit, not a lot, but some, it pushed some of the homes out from where they were originally plotted. And so we had to not only accommodate for that or solve for that, but also solve for circulation and some other issues. And it became evident as we went through this land planning exercise that the zoning ordinance needed to be modified in order to accommodate what we were trying to do. And what we wanted to do, and it's still our primary objective, is not increase the densities, not increase the intensities, not increase the uses. We love it as it was approved. We just knew that we could do a better job, a more efficient job, a more aesthetically pleasing job at building what was already approved by a previous council. And so we're here tonight to ask that the zoning ordinance be modified and modernized to respond to these changes that we have in our land plan that also replace an obsolete development code. If we were to build the original plan, which we would be entitled to do based on the existing entitlements that run with the land in perpetuity, we would, I just lost my train of thought. But if we were to build it exactly the way that it is now, we could do so. But we would like to do a better job, something that's more responsive, a little bit more sensitive to the landscape, that would preserve a lot of the open space, a lot of the protected habitat. There's some elements to the site that are very sensitive. It's a protected species habitat that we're aware of, that we will work with the appropriate agencies, the Fish and Wildlife and the Army Corps of Engineers. There's Waterways, you know, TCEQ and other agencies, you know, we're working hand-in-hand with them. We'll make sure that everything gets done appropriately. But we're here to request that the zoning amendment, that the zoning ordinance be amended to be able to satisfy these uses which are not increasing in density or intensity. And with that, I'll answer any questions or yield my time back to staff.
Council, questions for him? Is it that golden-cheeked warbler?
It is.
I thought so.
It is.
So no wildlife safari?
No, but there are some of the old safari animals still on site. We've seen them roaming around on occasion.
Interesting. Roman, any questions?
Oh, is, not at this moment, but it was interesting. I watched the P&amp;Z hearing on this and heard the comments from individuals that spoke. Are you planning on putting in an actual whiskey commercial type of building in here?
It's a concept that we've contemplated, yes.
Is that in your concept plan?
It's that four-acre parcel that's further east on the project site that overlooks, which would be the 13th hole. It's kind of there in the little four-acre,
The pinkish.
Salmon-colored parcel.
Okay.
Yeah, we have negotiations right now with a distillery from Utah that is very interested in coming to Kerrville. One of their partners is a Kerrvillian and they would love to expand out of Utah into Kerrville. And so we're in, we're having those conversations.
That's all the questions I have right now. I have a couple of other comments or questions after public, yeah, hearing. Thank you.
We will go ahead with the public hearing then, thank you. At 9:05, we will open the public hearing.
Pablo Brinkman, but I don't see him.
He went to the corner.
Are you hiding in the corner, Pablo?
You know, that's the best thing somebody took me along. Pablo Brinkman, 39, 28 Oak Park Drive. I just like saying whiskey. You know, this is, this is kind of what Whiskey Springs and what they're proposing, those that know Whiskey Canyon Ranch and have been on it and seen, excuse me, topography, very much so. We have to noodle around, change things. We've talked about, we've had people talk tonight about just the amount of dirt work it takes just to get a lot ready. It, this is one of those things where I'm real excited about this project for a lot of reasons because it takes doers to do things. The former thing we went through earlier today, when we started this 12 hours ago, they're a doer. This group are doers. And so this project is excitable. This is putting Kerrville on a map for a lot of different things. The amount of commercial applications that this could bring, not to say just jobs, but we all talk about walkability and doing things with retail. There's just a lot of positivity that could really, for so many things that were brought up today about Kerrville and things that we need, I think this checks a lot of those boxes. So zoning is something that is tough. You know, we've, we went from 57 down, we've changed things, but the original plan was not conducive to kind of where we are now. That's a lot of times what you have is you'll have people that'll do plans that aren't from Kerrville, that aren't from here, that don't know what our topography is. And then when you get on the ground, like they did, they said, "We need to really massage this." So I just, I'm excited about it, I'm excited as it progresses and moves forward. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Zane Presley?
Good evening, I'm Zane Presley. I live at 1392 Whiskey Canyon Ranch Road in Kerrville. And thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm here along with another colleague and neighbor to represent the neighborhood that's in our homeowner's association along with a adjoining homeowner's association, along with some other property owners. We, not knowing what was going to be on the agenda tonight, we still had great respect for your time and didn't want to belabor the points that we have and come here with two dozen people to try to speak. We sent you a letter in advance, which you may or not, given everything else that you've had to do, had a chance to review, hopefully to highlight some of the issues and concerns that we have regarding the development. I wanted to just say in general that we live in a neighborhood that's approximately the same size as the development that's planned, although in our, and this is just Hidden Ridge Ranch's HOA. We got about the same number of acreage and we have 17 lots. So our average size of our space is in the neighborhood of 45 or so acres. So we, as Mr. Garcia noted in his prayer of wanting to enjoy the God-given creation that we have, we've moved here, many of people in there, in the neighborhood have lived here when this was originally approved, over 20 years ago. And so we bought the space here with the idea of being able to live, feeling like we're outdoors and out of town even though we're very close to the city center where we, you know, invest our lives and our families and everything else that we have. So we do have some issues and concerns about the project. We don't think those are just solely just for our benefit. We think there are things that affect the community and the city. And since there's two of us who are going to be speaking, Judge Williams, who will speak after me, is going to be addressing most of those types of items. I particularly wanted to address the one item that was in the letter that we spoke about before and actually, given what everyone's said at this point, including the developer, this should be a pretty easy one. The original existing zoning that was put into place 20 years ago, there's a particular ridge, partial 11, that runs right along Whiskey Ridge Trail. ridge, partial 11, that runs right along Whiskey Ridge Trail. And right on the opposite of that little road is where our homeowners live. And so on that particular piece of this 800 acres, this involves about 15 or so acres out of the 800, the original currently approved zoning had five lots that were across the road from our existing homeowners, and each of those was three acres in size. So it's a long way from 45 acres. And where I can sit in our development now and see one neighbor from my house, a lot of our people are going to be seeing a lot more houses and a lot closer together than they have seen. But in the revised proposal that the developer has presented, those particular tracks that are across from us as existing community members have been doubled in size in the number of lots, and the density of those lots has been reduced, has been multiplied by three basically because their size has been reduced by a third. So we are here to kindly request the city council not approve the revised plan as it's currently shown for those changes there. We would like to revert back to the plan that was originally approved 20 years ago, which at least gave, gave some degree of consideration to the homeowners and the kind of lifestyle that they were choosing to live. So that would be our request. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Besides whatever the Mr. Williams will say.
Thank you.
Martin, can you put the PowerPoint back up?
Good late evening, how are we all? Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you. My name's Keith Williams. I am, and my wife live at 1126 Whiskey Ridge Trail. Have been residents of Kerrville and Kerr County for over 38 years. Love it here. And it's a wonderful community we all appreciate and love. And like to see good observation, you know, good oversight over what's happening in community. I've listened with interest with a lot of what y'all had to deal with today or tonight. And this one's a little bit different in tone. We have a number of issues I wanted to bring up, but I'm only going to focus on two. Did y'all, did y'all read Mistress Clack's letter by chance?
Yes.
Okay, well, I'm trying not to be redundant, but two things that really are concerned. This, this is Councilmember Herring mentioned a moment ago. This plat was originally approved in 2000, in, I think, 2003, like 20 years ago. And it's been out there a long time. A lot of things have changed in 20 years. If you'll look, do y'all have screens and see that all there? If you look in the northwest corner, upper corner that, that where it says Whiskey Ridge Trail, this is just something we wanted to make sure that y'all were aware of. We haven't dealt with these owners or proposed owners yet, but as you go along from east to west on Whiskey Ridge Trail, it looks like, and I think Mr. Clack mentioned this, but I know they're just identifying these, but if I want to make sure, as far as access to this property is concerned, that is an easement that is owned by, maintained and upgraded by the Homeowners Association, Whiskey Canyon, Grotto Springs, and some of the other owners, the Holsher Ranch or the Johanes Ranch, and a number of other people that are copied in your email. And it is, we've gone through all the records and the deed records and everything, and just want to make sure that there's an understanding. And I think the Planning and Zoning Committee that we're going to look at it, but we have documentation to make sure they understand that there is not going to be access to this proposed development on that north side off of Whiskey Ridge Trail because the Whiskey Ridge Homeowners Association owns that easement completely. They maintain it, have done so for as long as this, our development has been in existence since early 1990s, I guess. The main road coming in, which is off 16, a little bit north of Benny Keith's Brewer, Beer Company, is on the right, and that's Whiskey Canyon Road. And that also is owned by the Homeowners Association and maintained and paid the cost of expense of maintaining that. So we just wanted to make sure that that was pointed out because access is going to be key. And if you look on the southwest, low southwest part of your map there before you, where 16 intersects Interstate 10, there, you go north of that, you go northeast of that Exxon station, and their proposed entrance is near there. And that's real close to Interstate 10 and 16, which is a very, very busy area. And when you take the 368 homes that are proposed, a hotel, an 18-hole golf course, and a number of commercial and retail outlets, that's going to be huge, huge traffic. And just, this is just FYI, I just want to make sure this is brought up early on that, you know, they may say, well, we, we need access there, whatever. That would, would be objected to. We have conclusive confirmation that easement is owned by the HOA. And as you consider the, you said you were going to, you didn't say this, but it was in the agenda, you were considering the concept plan and land use. And I think it's important to consider that in terms of how it would be accessed. Whether the fire, would the firemen, fire department be able to get, am I finished?
If you finish up quickly, sir, please.
Okay, I'll finish up. The other, well, okay, let me wrap it up with this, please. That is a, it's going to be a serious, serious situation on 16, safety-wise. And I think the access issue is going to be critical for a development that large with that many people and that many thousands of guests. And I think it's something that really needs to be factored in, that what these folks would do with that, how they would propose to deal with it is there being on that sole access. And I think it's one of those things after 20 years that the council could consider in your deliberations over whether or not to adopt this plan or accept its amendments. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you.
That's the end of the citizen speakers that signed up. However, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak?
Let's stand on one leg.
One leg?
For the whole time, no.
821 Earl Garrett Street, Bruce Stratey. I can't do that.
Your time's moving.
I know. This is a project that has been a vision, a dream for 20 years. We just heard it. And lots of people have looked at it. And we've got some folks from Utah who have looked at it. And I grew up there, and they happen to be very creative people. I can tell you, development in Utah is done in a completely different way than it is in Texas. If you go to the Salt Lake Valley, the city of Salt Lake and the county of Salt Lake have a bunch of municipal parks. And every one of those parks is built so that it's below the road grade because it's also located on a creek. And when there's a flood, they close the floodgates that flood the parks instead of the businesses and the houses. There are irrigation channels that run all over that valley. And I was part of a group out of a community in the southeast Draper that bought their own, a private water company and turned it into a municipal water company. And then we passed a $14 million bond and bought over 1,000 acres of watershed, including all the irrigation canals which we turned into trails. These people are creative. They're constantly working to make things better. And this is the kind of group we want to invite to Kerrville because they see the specialness. They see how we have been invented, how you were invented, Joe. What was that, 25 years ago when we did the first ASR well? The second one in the country? The first one in Texas? It was a long time ago. And this is a great project. And they have these entitlements and they're trying to make them better and fit today and fit Kerrville today, the new Kerrville. So thank you very much, I appreciate the time.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Barbara, come to, please.
I'll look here.
Okay. I just wanted to make a couple of comments. First of all, earlier, I know I confused the city manager by alluding to 868 homes tonight, and it's because it included these 368 homes. It's just the fact that this looks like a beautiful development. I really appreciate the thought that's going into it and the way you're laying it out. And I do appreciate the concerns of the homeowners, and it would be nice if that one little connective piece could be little larger lots in consideration for them. But I did have a question regarding water for the golf course. Will this be something that they will pursue, maybe the reuse water? Okay. And I'm trying to think if there was anything. Oh, I did have a concern when you raised the idea of a whiskey distillery on the 13th hole. How do you expect the golfers to finish the remaining holes? Thank you.
Thank you.
They'll do it joyfully.
Their handicap will come.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? All right, at 9:20?
One thing real briefly, Ms. First, the one question you asked about the water, if the P and Z being that was there, we talked about that, and it says that the golf course will be for gray water and all the residences.
At 9:21, we will close the public hearing. And are there questions or comments that we need before we take a vote? Roman?
Go ahead, please.
I'm trying to understand the easement issue here, so help me out if you can. But I'm looking at, we're talking about the access to the road, right? And I think it was on the northeast side of it, there's supposed to be like an entrance-exit. Is that the issue that we're talking about?
Yes.
So how's that going to work?
That would be handled through plating. That was on the previous, Martin, can you put the PowerPoint back up, please?
There we go.
That was included on the previous plan.
Right.
And commensurate with that, the developer included it on the new plan. That legal access right would be a plating issue. So once they come forward with the preliminary plat, that will be something staff reviews and looks at.
Okay.
We have not looked into that at this time.
Okay.
So we, all we're looking at right now is an amendment or the amendment to...
That's correct. And again, the current entitlement, they could go build this site plan today. They are entitled for this density, for these number of lots. They are asking to rearrange those to better fit the land in their opinion and their design with the same density and same uses.
Can I?
Question?
I wasn't done, I was interrupted.
I thought you were done.
That's it. The density does look, I mean, you have smaller lots because we were provided both versions, the old version and the new version. If you look at, I mean, you take, for example, the top northeast side of it, those that are along Whiskey Ridge Trail, all of those have been condensed. I mean, there was originally one, two, three, four, five lots. Now we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11. So almost doubled the density. So can you explain how that's going to work when we're being told the density isn't changed when it shows otherwise?
The overall density of the project is for 368 lots. That lot count has not changed. We have changed some of the lot sizes. My understanding in reading the original ordinance, the ordinance states that that parcel in that corner is to be minimum one-acre lots. Although the original plan drew larger lots, the minimum acreage was one-acre lots. And so we are trying to comply with the existing code, modifying the language to be able to move some of the uses around and mix lot sizes together. So although it was originally drawn as larger lots...
Right.
The zoning ordinance said this parcel must have a minimum of one-acre lots, which means they could be drawn larger.
Right.
In which, and they were. But it doesn't prevent me from drawing them smaller.
Right.
So I could do that with the old code or the proposed new code if it passes. But either way, those lots in that corner could be one-acre minimum sizes.
So can you help me understand the setback regulations and how those are being changed? That's on page five of the ordinance.
All we're saying is that we'll comply with current Kerrville setback ordinances.
Okay, and that was, I just want clarification, like, are all of these changed? Because I compared it with our existing zoning ordinance, but at the same time, this is a PD, so almost anything goes. So it's, I'm not understanding if, you can't, you can't say it's with the PD because, I mean, you make a lot of that up as it is subject to the property or the project. So what are we comparing these two to come into compliance? And which one?
The original PD had larger setbacks.
Right, I'm looking, I see that.
And so they were reducing those to 25-foot setback based on our current code. Be more responsive to the topography so that the house can be closer to the street so they're not have to, having to worry about where the house site is with the topography.
Right. And one of my last things was the, oh, actually, I had two things. So you had three exits and entrances on the previous concept plan. There were two right there off of, what is it, Fredericksburg? Yeah, right there on the, yep, on the west side of it. There's two there, and then there's one on the northeast side of it. On the new concept plan, that it removes one of those. Can you tell me why that did? Because that, I'm going towards also the question about the traffic impact analysis that has to be done and get clarification on how any of that changes, subject to all of these changes as well.
So that, we didn't require a TIA because this is an existing planned development district, and they are just amending that ordinance. It is not a new application. It is a Texas highway, so regardless of this site plan, they still have to get approval through Texas and Texas requirements.
Do you want to speak to, you don't have to, but if you don't want to, but do you want to speak to why the second exit entrance was taken out?
I think at this stage, you know, it's important to remember that this is high-level concept planning, and a lot of these questions will be answered as we go through the plating process, but not very final. And as Mr. Paxton has stated, you know, we'll work with Texas and whatever jurisdictional agencies there are to make sure that it's done properly. And so, you know, there are, I think, two, maybe three more locations along the Highway 16 frontage where we could create additional access points. And we will do that as needed and as required and as it makes the project better. But to the extent that it complies with code, we feel like this is a, is a good conceptual representation of what we're trying to build, but not a final, you know, stamped version of what it will be. And as to the corner easement issue that's been brought up, we have no intention whatsoever of having that be a daily-use road for access egress and ingress. No, that, that is merely there as, my understanding with the original plan, as an emergency egress in the case of a required evacuation, in case there was a fire or some kind of a biological problem or hazard that required people to get out. And of course, we'll work with the fire district to make sure that, you know, we do things according to, you know, how they want it done. So we'll solve for those, you know, in the appropriate stages. But again, tonight, try to redirect, you know, this is a zoning ordinance issue as opposed to a site planning issue.
Right, yeah. I'm just, I'll end it, I'm not going to say too much. I'm just trying to figure out, you know, we're coming into compliance with the zoning code on part of it, but usually when we get a PD, we also require that TIA to be done. And that impacts a lot of usually how the plan is going to be, is going to go through and be developed, but we, we don't have that aspect here. And that, I think, addresses the concerns on those, so. Thank you, that's all I had.
Joe?
Welcome to Texas.
Thank you, sir.
It's not Utah, it's not Columbia. Have you had the time to talk with your neighbors yet?
We wouldn't have a chance.
Wouldn't it?
Sure, yeah.
Because what we can do is we can make a decision that makes all of you upset. Or you could work together.
I bet.
Is that a plan you think you could follow, you could do?
I would love to get to know my neighbors, absolutely.
Good, because they obviously have problems with some of the high-level concepts you're discussing here. I'm almost of the opinion we should table it until you, y'all get together for a little bit. You and your neighbors. Otherwise, you're going to be unhappy. And they're going to be unhappy. Why don't you work together?
I'm totally open to that, absolutely. I have no qualms whatsoever with working with neighbors. It's been a practice of my entire career.
I agree, that's great. And they've worked with neighbors before, too. Is it appropriate then to ask that we table this until such time as the groups get together for a little while?
Drew, advise us on, on tabling. I mean, it's an option?
It is an option. We've had the public hearing. It would come back on council as a first reading.
First reading.
Now, I apologize, about nine o'clock, I get cranky.
Well, the question I would have, if I might ask...
Please, go ahead.
Is, is does the zoning amendments, if we were to vote on that and assume it passes, say, say you vote in the affirmative? say, say you vote in the affirmative, that would not prevent me from being able to work with my neighbors on the site plans and on the plats, on the layouts and access. I can continue to do that.
I would prefer, I would prefer a high-concept plan that doesn't have all these conflicts or it's all into it. And that's what you're presenting tonight.
Correct, I'm, I'm presenting a modification of what was previously approved 20 years ago.
I understand. I was mayor 30 years ago, a lot of fun. So listen, what I would like to do with everyone, the party's permission, is table this until y'all can get together and talk. Otherwise, you don't have the votes tonight.
Councilmember Herring?
Okay.
Go ahead.
I, I know what you're getting at, and I appreciate that. I think both sides are right. I think, I've talked to the representatives of the landowners before, and I think that they bring up a valid concern. I think they've inherited a concept plan with that piece going up there. Whether it's for emergency access or whatever it was for, I don't, I don't know.
Right, but also the, also the lot sizes in that upper north, northeast corner.
Right, but you have to remember that you all are charged with what's an appropriate use and what's not.
Correct, I am trying to remember that, sir.
Right, I know.
It's 9:30 at night.
I know, I know. And what I, what I'm suggesting is, instead of, because I, I think we would probably have to go do another public hearing and the, and the delay of that and expense of that, between first reading and second reading, you know, you, you've clearly charged them with getting together and resolving that issue. That, that segment, I think it's a concept plan, it could be taken out because all, all the, all of the access and the internal streets and all that is going to be handled via the, the plating process.
Are you just asking what we did the other night and say, we'll, we'll advance tonight, but if y'all don't get together before next time, it's not going to happen.
Understood.
Is that fair with you guys? Ma'am?
Well, that didn't really pan out the first time, so.
No, I think that.
It actually did, because they negotiated with, they got new negotiated.
I think that if we, if we voted it in tonight, then we charge them with.
Get together.
Conversations.
At the end of the day, I mean, I, I see everybody's point. I read Mr. Clax's letter. There's that Golden Cheek Warbler we got to worry about. There's, there's questionable access for fire equipment should homes catch on fire out there. But at the end of the day, it's still private property.
Indeed, it is. And it complies with law.
Yes, and we are, we are limited as to what we can do.
Judge Williams is an hour Baptist and the whole whiskey thing.
So with that, you guys have a personal problem. Okay, are we ready then to vote? You need to come to the mic, sir.
I welcome the opportunity to meet with this gentleman and his people anytime we can. But if you go ahead and pass it tonight, what motivation does he have to work with us on anything?
Because we've asked him to.
Say that again, please?
We've asked him to, and, and we might not vote on it the second time.
Second reading, there's two readings.
There's two readings.
I can change between the first and the second.
He's from Utah, he's told us that he will do that.
So your next meeting is, is in two weeks?
No, no, we don't have one in Thanksgiving.
No, 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 no. First one's December.
You've got time.
Okay, all right, very well, I understand. So there's one more round?
Yep.
One more round.
All right, counsel. Do we have a motion?
Yes. I will make the motion to approve ordinance number 2023-31.
First reading. First reading, we have a second?
I'll second it under advisement, sir. You understand? Okay.
All in favor, right hand, please. And it is approved unanimously. All right, when they invite you for coffee, let us know. Or when you invite them for coffee.
What's next?
What's next? We are ready for.
Ordinance number 2023-32. An ordinance changing the zoning of a property known as 518 and 520 Lois Street, consisting of lots one through three, block 25 of the Westland Edition within the city of Curville, Cook County, Texas, from a single-family residential with accessory dwelling unit zoning district R1A to a light commercial zoning district C2, and providing other matters relating to the subject. We do have two citizen speakers signed up, however, this is a public hearing.
Drew?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request to change the zoning from R1A to C2, 518 and 520 Lois. This is the site of Mr. Hager's plumbing business office and an existing shop. They were wanting to rebuild or build a new shop on this property, so they're looking to rezone it. The, the, both, the office and the shop are nonconforming, grandfathered from previous code and implementation. Here's the zoning maps on the R1A. You do have C2 across the street, C1 and C2 down the street on this block of Lois. It is within the strategic catalyst area along Junction Highway 4, commercial, local commercial uses such as this. And I'd be, let's see, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval with unanimous vote on October 5th. Be pleased to answer any questions before or after the public hearing.
Okay. Drew, how is, how is this property nonconforming right now? What they're going to build, I believe.
I'm missing some gaps in the history. At some point, they converted the home to an office. At one point, this property, I believe, was owned RT, which would allow the office.
Okay.
I cannot find record of when it was rezoned back to R1A.
Okay.
The shed or the workshop space next door, I believe, was also a previously existing structure. It's a small accessory building that they've been using as storage. They were wanting to expand that and build a new, larger storage building for the business. Could not get a permit for the commercial structure because it's not zoned for that, that use.
And do we know where they plan to put the new building? Is it going to be along the C1?
Yes.
It would be?
Yes, I, you can see on the, I guess, the right-hand side of the property, where that's mostly paved. It'll be on that lot.
Okay, okay.
And so it is actually still three separate lots. The new building will be on that lot, replacing the old accessory building.
Okay. All right, any questions for Drew, counsel? All right, is the applicant here?
That's the bedtime.
The owner is not here. All right. At 9:37, we will open the public hearing. Pablo Brinkman?
Honestly, I don't see him.
Okay. All right, who's in?
Lynn Miller.
Eber.
Lynn Miller. I live at 9, 519 Florence Street, and my property is directly involved in this. It's a residential. It took me 18 years to purchase it. I bought it in 2016. And I've spent quite a bit of money improving it. It was semi-remodeled, and I've been finishing the remodeling. And I, I also have been working on the outside. I have a garden, and I finally was able to retire in April. And then I have this little dark shadow because whoever, Mr. Hager is wanting to change the zoning to a light commercial zoning, and it directly affects my home. I'm, I have, I'm very worried that it's going to affect my, my property as far as when I sell it. And that the, the ambiance, I mean, it's a, it's a very quiet neighborhood with the exception of the traffic hour. But other than that, I have lovely people across the street with the Christian Science Reading Room, and my neighborhood is, is just a very nice neighborhood. What I'm worried about is when I go to sell my house and how that will affect the sale of my home. And I'm also worried that the, that, that once you put in some commercial, put it into a commercial category, that means for more commercial in a, in a little, a couple blocks of residential area. So those are my concerns, and I'm hoping that you'll take this into consideration because I feel that it's very unfair. If you want to change something, you want to build a building or whatever, it's one thing. But when you change the zoning to, and it affects your neighbors around you, that's not right either. So that's it. I'm sure everybody's very tired, I know I am, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's the end of the citizen speakers who have signed up for the public hearing.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? All right, at 9:40, we will close the public hearing. Counsel, any questions, comments?
Drew, Mr. Paxton, oh, go ahead.
No.
Were you, were you going to say something?
Go ahead.
Don't want to interrupt anybody. Mr. Paxton? Is it currently, it's nonconforming, so it's currently light, essentially light, light commercial?
That's correct.
Present?
That is correct.
And the owner is proposing to build a building along the alleyway or along that driveway? Where, where is the building?
It would be along the alleyway. So it would be towards the rear of the property, having the commercial. Towards the alley, which would be the northeast side of the property. It would require a screening fence, which I believe there's a fence there currently. It'll have to obviously qualify with the current screening requirements with the commercial zone.
The new structure will be screened?
That's correct.
And, uh... It sounds as if the property owner is going to improve the property, hand-screen the property.
Correct.
From a use that's currently.
Nonconforming.
Nonconforming use.
That's right.
Okay, and it's surrounded on the south, 518, 516, 512, and 506 are already zoned some type of commercial, is that correct?
That is correct.
Is the, is the alleyway a drivable alleyway?
Yeah.
It is? Okay.
Then it'll be screened, too, I think.
Any further questions?
So you said they're going to replace that, what looks like an accessory dwelling or whatever accessory building that is, they're removing that and improving, making the commercial improvements there?
Uh, yes.
Is, is that not, that's not within the alley?
There's actually four structures on the entire property.
Right.
There's the original home, there's an accessory building to the northeast of that home, to the southeast of that, you can see the gray roof.
Yep.
This is southeast of that, about where that little red car is.
Okay, that, the other darker gray, I guess.
Correct.
Structure.
So it will actually be down the alley from, from 519, from the property at 519?
Yes.
Quite a ways.
Yeah, it will be behind 515.
515, yes.
Okay. And I just want to add, ma'am, I appreciate you staying here the entire time and speaking on this. Every time we have this type of request, it's always a competing interest of property rights versus how the city is going to govern and control via zoning and land uses. So I just want to make sure that's, that's clear. From my conservative perspective, I'm always looking more on the property rights of an individual and making sure we protect that. And already, right now, it seems that it is a nonconforming commercial use. They're wanting to do something else there, and we'd have to make it commercial in order to do that permanently, but, so. But I do want to thank you for being here this entire time to speak to us.
All right, counsel, are we ready for a vote?
A motion.
A motion first, of course.
Sorry. I'm going to adopt ordinance number 2023-32 on first reading.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, right hand, please. And it is unanimous. Seven C.
Ordinance number 2023-33. An ordinance submitting Chapter 60 of the Code of Ordinances, City of Curville, Texas, by changing the zoning for the property known as 226 Harper Road, FM 783, an approximate 1.71 acre tract out of the Folsgate Survey Number 120, Abstract 138, from a single-family residential zoning district R1 to a residential transition zoning district RT, and providing other matters relating to the subject. We do not have any citizen speaker signed up, however, this is a public hearing.
Drew?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request to go from R1 to RT. It is currently a single-family home. Zoning on either side is R1, however, 220 is a handicap group home, and to my knowledge, has been for quite some time. And as you can see, the large lot on the corner is also zoned RT. By today's standards, these lots would not be allowed to front on Harper Road as single-family homes. So they are out of the norm by today's standards. So the applicant has requested RT zoning, and they are here if you have any questions. Be pleased to answer any questions before or after the public hearing.
Okay. Anything for Drew? Would the applicant like to say a few words?
Hi, how are y'all? Rodney Bacon. We'd just like to get that, that house is going to belong to me and my siblings here soon. And it's a really big house. We think there aren't many families that are going to want a house that big, so we'd like to open some options and change it, and we think it's just long overdue considering 220, 220 Harper has been there for 25 years. It's obviously a commercial business, 24/7. We don't want a 24/7. They said like, we'd like an option of maybe having an office of some sort in there, real estate law, something decent like that. Again, on the corner, you know, was, was a real estate office. Across the street's been apartments that have been there for 50 years. And then going up the other way, you know, we've got lots of garden homes. And when that home was built, those were all really large lots. Until you get to the other side of Mom's house, and they took two lots and turned it into six homes with the cul-de-sac. So it's also on Harper Road, one of the only two corridors between Interstate 10 and 27. So we just think it's time, we'd appreciate a chance to, we think it opens some options for us. I've, I've talked to the neighbors, they're all in support. I didn't get any resistance when I went around and talked to them. Sam Brazel says he thinks it's a good idea.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
All right, at 9:47, we will open the public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak? At 9:47, we will close the public hearing. Do we have a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number 2023-23.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you. All in favor, right hand, and it is unanimous. Eight A. Shall we?
Resolution number 36-2023. A resolution approving a resolution of the City of Curville, Texas Economic Improvement Corporation with respect to the issuance of up to $20 million and in principal amount of its sales tax revenue bond series 2023 to finance costs of certain projects being undertaken by the corporation in the request and for the benefit of the city projects. Okay, to finance cost of certain projects being undertaken by the corporation at the request and for the benefit of the city, which are authorized to be financed by the corporation pursuant to the Development Corporation Act, primarily Section 505.152 of the Texas Local Government Code, and approving an amendment to the sales tax remittance agreement between the corporation and the city. We do have 16 speakers signed up, and this is not a public hearing.
Oh.
So would you like three minutes or four minutes?
Three minutes?
I mean, the rule says four minutes. I don't know why we keep asking that question.
And, uh, do we need a five-minute break? Just a break?
No, I'm good.
Go? We'll go, all right. Let's start. Barbara Dole Ferguson?
She faded.
Okay. Nikki Keynes?
He's here.
Three minutes, please.
Yes, ma'am. Nikki Keynes, a proud Curville citizen, now tagged organized opposition. Proud. Not so much, I don't think. I'm, I'm, all I'm going to say about this is the twenty million dollars in bonds is an awful lot of money. And I don't, personally, I don't care which pocket or which bucket it comes from. We're talking about funding projects that, in my opinion, should be more based on maintenance, that the city should be taking care of. I align it a lot with the, the police department. The city let it go for years and years and years and then it became a priority. And now we're looking at some pretty major projects, I do agree. But these projects had no oversight, in my opinion, and the maintenance was not being done. And now we're asking for twenty million dollars. Thanks.
Thank you.
Um, I think we should say that, I don't believe we mentioned, uh, planning and zoning, no. EIC did approve this last night, so just FYI. John Anderson?
Mayor Eichner, members of the council. I'm John Anderson. I live at twenty-seven twenty-nine Indian Wells. And I'm here this evening to urge your support to, to pass, take the resolution that was recommended to you last night by the EIC to issue the twenty million dollars or up to twenty million dollars of tax revenue bonds. I'm, I happen to be chairman of the Upper Guadalupe River Center Foundation. Our interest in this is that the, in the Granger McDonald Park improvements that are within the recommended bond issue, those improvements would be, uh, create and open Nimitz Lake, give more access for the youth and the families of our community that they simply don't have right now. It would help to open up what people refer to as the gem of a lake. I think additionally, improvements to that park will be the first block to create a, a river center, the Guadalupe River Center, that will be essentially a coalition of four partners. The city itself with the Granger McDonald Park improvements, the Upper Guadalupe River Authority, the McDonald Companies, and the Upper Guadalupe River Center Foundation. Taken together, what, with the park alone, with the improvements that are proposed, would be a great addition to this community's recreational platform. But I think combined with the other partners and the river center, it's going to create a, essentially a multipurpose community center on the lake, on the river, and offer a wide variety of recreational, sporting, and educational opportunities for our community. It will set a standard for the development and landscaping in the Nimitz Lake area and offer a very wide range of programs. It has been characterized by some of the private donors that we're talking to as something that would be transformative for, for our community. So we urge you to support the bond package. And I want to take this opportunity, I think I could probably speak for everyone in this room, to thank all of you for what you're doing right now. Just, just, just listening and watching to what you're doing. You're volunteers and you don't have flak vests. And you're doing just a wonderful service for our community and it's one of the reasons this community is what it is. Thank you.
Here.
William Rector?
Bill Rector, seven oh five Water Street. And with your permission, I'll be very brief. I would ask that you consider passing this bond proposal. The Heritage Center is depending upon it. We entered a partnership with the city in two thousand and twenty-one. This is going to complete the building for the Heritage Center. This is going to help fill those five hundred homes that you authorize tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Debbie Layer?
Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Debbie Layer. I'm the executive director of York County United Way and I am from a waterman's family. A waterman is defined as one who makes a living on, in, or from the water. My family has owned and operated four kayak, stand-up paddleboard tour companies since nineteen ninety-three. We are also, were all once employed as county lifeguards, members or employed by yacht clubs and members or founders of beach and athletic clubs. We were all involved in sailing, regattas growing up and, as well as surfing and paddling competitions. Because of my background, I'm naturally attracted to the Guadalupe River and Nimitz Lake and the center, River Center. Over the years, our family has worked with those that in the past have not had the opportunity to enjoy boating and water activities because of their physical or mental disabilities. In our family alone, we learned the attraction of autism spectrum disorder, ASD, to water. As watermen, we researched through many programs to learn how to adapt our lifestyle to accommodate our needs with ASD. We learned that the hydrostatic pressure of water can provide the necessary sensory input that individuals with ASD crave, as well as dampen sensory overstimulation, creating a comfortable and relaxing environment similar to the concept of a weighted blanket. I have seen those with ASD grow exponentially in, in their immersion through boating, paddling, and swimming. It would be my hope that the planned adaptive peers at GRC would include programming for those with mental and physical disabilities. I myself had a setback and was in a wheelchair for a few months before the ADA passed adoptions for those with disabilities. But I was not going to allow that to dampen me or keep me from sailing and paddling with my family. With the help of my brothers, we built slings, sleds, and pulleys and I was able to configure a way for me to lift and push not only my boat or paddleboard into the water, but to lift and push myself onto my watercraft. Because of our experience in those few months of inconvenience, we began to attract more families and tourists to our adventure company to help them learn the skills and enjoy new experiences on water that they had never had the option to have before. I believe that will be the case with the GRC adaptive equipment as well. In my years of working around the water, the most important aspect is educating those around these activities. The GRC could bring training programs for those wishing to become lifeguards, nautical coaches, and even those who collaborate with people with disabilities. Additional education about lifestyle, nature, water, fishing, conservation would broaden public opportunities to enjoy the river and Nimitz Lake. All of the learning and opportunities should be available to everyone in the community. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Charlie McElvain?
Good evening, Mayor Eichner and city council members. I am Charlie McElvain at one twenty-eight Mesa del Sol here in Kerrville. I am the retired president and CEO of the Kerrville Convention and Visitors Bureau. One of the most underutilized areas of Kerrville, yet an area that is almost, has almost unlimited potential, is the city-owned Nimitz Lake Granger McDonald Park. I am urging the city council to move forward with the two point two million dollar funding request for the Granger McDonald Park improvements requested by the Upper Guadalupe River Center Board of Directors. Based on offering a variety of programs, including multi-sport competitions, events, and camps, sailing regattas, radio-controlled events, open water swim competitions and classes, scuba certification, bike tours, high school, university, and sea scout sailing events, white label sailing camps, and physically challenged facilities, and a variety of children and family-oriented competitions and events aimed at not only residents of Kerrville, but also year-round travelers. Kerrville has the opportunity to generate millions of fresh dollars plus new tax dollars into our community on an annual basis with these and other programs. One example is the Kerrville Tri-Festival, which currently generates almost a half a million dollars into our community annually, based on the sale of hotel rooms, meals, fuel, and other incidentals. The Kerrville Sports Complex on Holdsworth Drive is another example. That complex generates equally impressive revenue for our community each time the complex hosts a major event. Economic impact studies conducted by nationally-known Dean Runyon and Associates, a highly respected travel industry research organization, conducted studies with the following results. Each athlete participating in a special event or activity are normally joined by two point two additional visitors. And they each generate approximately two hundred dollars per day, per person during their visit. The good news is that these are only a fraction of things to come with events and activities that will potentially be gener, be generated for Kerrville, taking place at the Granger McDonald Park. And better yet, our community generates approximately a third of the tax, uh, tax revenue collected by our city from visitors. And these tax dollars provides goods and services for our community that citizens of Kerrville do not have to pay for. Once these individuals visit Kerrville, participate in their events, spend their money, they go home, creating a win-win for every business and every citizen of Kerrville. For these and other reasons, I encourage the city council to approve the Upper Guadalupe River Center's board request for two point two million dollars for the Granger McDonald Park improvements.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lisa Nye Saladin?
My name is Lisa Nye Saladin. I live at ten fifteen Morningside Drive and I'm in the current chair of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. I want to remind counsel that the EIC vote last night was not unanimous. I voiced my concerns pertaining to this bond and the breakdown of the monies that will be allocated. It may appear that I object to the Granger McDonald Park and I would like to clarify a few things. I do not object to this park and the vision that it represents. I do object to the use of public funds that are being diverted from other parks in Kerrville that have gone through the process of public hearings, master plans, approvals, priorities, and support of city staff, the Parks and Recreation Department, and the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. The Upper Guadalupe River Center Foundation was invited to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board meeting in September and gave their presentation. When the typical questions that would follow a presentation from staff on a park's improvement plan were asked, there were not many real answers. To me, it indicated that this park was not ready for primetime, yet the funding seems to be a done deal. The precedent that is being set here is one that throws up many red flags. A private group has skirted the process and without a city-vetted public park master plan is now getting public funding for a vision. I'm skeptical that the promises being made are actually going to be kept. Without the project going through the Parks and Recreation Department and the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board and receiving that specific support needed for a public park, I would like to see some sort of track record of a completed project done by a private group receiving public funds for a public park. Speaking to the entire bond proposal, these small projects that are within the scope of the bond should be pulled from the big projects and considered independently. It's almost as if a frenzy has occurred and all of these projects have to get rolled into this bond, like it's the last time the EIC and the city will give any money. The five million made up of the three smaller projects funded over the life of the bond will cost in interest almost the same as the principal over twenty years of current, at the current rate. Pull these from the bond, consider them separately, and fund them short-term. This will save the city money and will leave future EICs the flexibility to keep funding the never-ending list of projects in Kerrville.
Thank you.
Angela Kennedy?
Angela Kennedy, five four seven Fairway Drive. Mayor Eichner and council members, thank you for being here late. My kids are already in bed. I know we're ready to get there too. But I'm here to speak to, thank you for your continued support for the bond sale that will support the additional funding needed for the renovation of the AC and Murda Striner House, which will be the future site of the Heart of the Hills Heritage Center. Community supports this project. Our board, who has been here the whole time for hours, supports this project and I sent some notes of support to you earlier today as well. The house is the right place. This is the right time for the Heritage Center. The house has been here for over one hundred years and it is the right place to develop the Heritage Center, a place that our community knows, our community has visited, and our community has seen in historic photographs. Please help us. Please approve the bond sale so that we can celebrate our heritage in this house for at least one hundred more years. Thank you.
Thank you.
Celeste Hammon?
Hi, Celeste Hammon. I live in Kerrville and I am excited about the possibility of the Granger McDonald Park being built soon because I was the chair of the Parks and Advisory Board in twenty twenty-one when we worked on the ten-year master plan. And it was an exciting project for me because we were not just rubber-stamping what the staff was doing. It's, we actually got asked to be involved in contributing to the plan. And we were tasked with the idea of thinking big and bold and outside of the box and what the parks could do ten years, over the next ten years. And so I was excited when I heard about the whole River Center plan because so many of what is planned there is included in the master plan. And specifically, when we're looking at this ten-year plan, it was an important conversation that we had as a board with the park staff because they said there's no way that we're going to be able to do this plan with city money. And so we're going to have to think creatively about funding any, a, a, a lot of the kinds of things that are listed in here. And listed it three times to talk creative, to think creatively about funding. And out of that creativity, some of the things that were mentioned were grants and bond series and public-private partnerships. And so the plan of the Granger Park design includes both of those last two bonds in public-private. Another thing that we talked a lot about was the importance of, of mitigating any of the ecological impacts that would happen out of any kind of development, particularly if the development was, excuse me, on the river. And wanting, and, and it's mentioned quite a few times within the plan, to collaborate with the UGRA and use best practices for watershed stewardship so that the amount of runoff that's coming off this park is actually filtered through the pavers that are part of the plan and the different kinds of landscaping to filter the water that's running off. And also the boardwalk that is going to be protecting the rock-perian buffer that will be underneath that boardwalk are all part of that, that plan for mitigation. And then the third part is that there is a line item in this plan that says, improve the access to Nimitz Lake. And I've talked to y'all about access before. And there are three ways that we're improving access. And the first way is that boardwalk that I just talked about. It's two hundred feet. It allows people to get down and close to the water. And then they can watch sailing events or any of the events that are happening on the water. But more importantly, they have access for themselves and their dog to be able to get into that water. And even more importantly, they have better access about how to get out of the water. And then we have this wide ramp and we have the, the accessible peers for people who are physically and mentally handicapped. So, thank you for that.
Thank you.
George Perudy?
George Perudy, sixteen sixteen Glen Road. So the first thing was, someone talked about it a little bit. It's, it's all packaged together, all these projects. And while there's a loose accounting of how it would be allocated out to each one, if one of them turns out to be short-changed in it and it's moved over to the other one, there's no accountability for that. So it would have been nice to have had an agreement that said, this project is this amount, up to this amount, this one's up to this month, and if they don't use it, it goes back. The other is, as they mentioned, I mean, it seems like the, the afterthought for this bond was the Granger McDonald Park and it seems like they're carrying the weight of the whole conversation. conversation, which seems odd to me. The one question I would ask is, when they originally proposed this project to you all, it was, "We have no ask, and we're going to go out and raise money by August of the one we've passed. We're going to have like six or eight million dollars raised, and you guys aren't going to be asked for anything." Now, they're asking $2 million for the park part, which is, I think, the least buildable part of it, and I haven't heard anybody ask, how much did they raise by August? If they've raised nothing, or something really small, then I don't see a point of giving a project that has no backing from anywhere, it was supposed to be a completely private project, is now becoming a mostly public one. So, I would seriously consider, if you can, and I don't know that you can, break these apart because at the end of the day, economic improvement corporation is to improve our economy. We just gave away $20 million on a housing project because we don't have enough jobs to pay for the housing that we have in this town. And now we're going to give away $20 million for amenities, which addresses what in housing? Oh, that's right, zero. So, let's figure out a way to kind of get on the same page of what we're trying to do with the money that we have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jacqueline Hall.
All right. I'll try to be brief. I wanted to address a few things that previous speakers said. I want to thank Ms. Saladin for her comments because she brought up a lot of things I was not aware of, and I'm glad that she made it aware to City Council as well. And I agree, I think this should be broken up. It's not a good idea to wrap it all together into one. I think these are all very worthy things to consider individually. And, you know, doing the whole omnibus style, that's what Congress does, and that's not a good idea to copy what Congress does, honestly. So, with what Nikki said, I believe especially on the Olympic pool and things like that, those are things that the city should be budgeting for. I think we really need to create a habit in all local governments, including Kerrville, to budget and pay for things as we go, pay as we go, instead of constantly issuing debt for everything. It's just really bad spending habits. I can't do that personally in my personal finance. I don't think the city should do that either. I disagree with Mr. Anderson, but I do want to highlight what he said about the amenities of the River Center and Park. It sounds like a great project. It sounds wonderful. I am curious about how much private funding has been secured and why there hasn't been more private funding secured, because it seems like something that donors and financiers would jump on, would jump at a chance to be able to build something like this. In terms of EIC approving it, buck stops the city council. Y'all are the final decision-makers. Y'all are the ones that answer to we, the taxpayers. So, just keep that in mind, too. On the Heart of the Hills Museum, I'm a history buff. I love the idea of having a history center here in town. Again, you know, can we get private donors to do that, or can we just consider it separately from everything else? I think those are all the concerns that I had, but I appreciate y'all's time.
Thank you.
Lang Guerrero.
I'm Lang Guerrero. I live at 307 Lakewood Drive. I'm here in support of the bond issue. I was struck earlier when I heard, or I saw the slide up there about the 2050-2018 group getting together and making their priorities, and you got to put that up on there. The number-one priority was infrastructure, obviously the water. Y'all are handling that. But number two was development on the river. And then number three was quality of place. So, that entire group named the top three, two of them cover what we're trying to get accomplished here at the Granger-McDonald Park. The Granger-McDonald Park is unique. It'll open up the lake, and if you open up the lake and create more activity, half that lake hasn't even been developed. You've got the side with chilis and all that stuff, but then on the other side, it's undeveloped land mostly. So, by creating that activity on the lake, you're going to create development activity around the lake. And then when you create the development activity around the lake, you create more ad valorem taxes. So, it's an incredible return on investment, and it's a small investment. And I want also to say that the capital campaign that we're putting on is not for Granger-McDonald Park, it's for the facility. When we started this capital campaign, there was no quality-of-place bond issue on the table, and we were under that assumption. And then when it came up, we said, "That's great. This is the city park. Let's have the city improve the park. We'll do the building and do the rest." And that's where we are today. So, I strongly suggest that we support the improvements to Granger-McDonald Park. I also strongly suggest that if we don't get these handicap accessible peers together on the Granger, on Nimitz Lake, we need to do that other places in the city because there are so many people that don't have access to the lake, and this is always a big part of that. So, that's it.
Thank you.
Rachel Johnston.
Hi there, I'm Rachel Johnston. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I live on 400 Overlook Drive. I'm here to talk about the Granger-McDonald Park and the improvements for it, and I'll try to be quick. Primarily, I want to tell you the reason I am serving on this. My husband and I have had a business in here in Kerrville for a long time. We recently celebrated 131 years in the hill country, and I know I don't look that old, but I want to say that our kids just graduated from Tyvee. We love the kids in this town. We have kids in this town that don't have opportunities. We have kids in town that are on free and reduced lunch. We have kids in town that only live around the three-mile circle that's their home. I've been involved with a mentoring program for a long time. I asked the little eighth grader who I've been mentoring for about seven years, "What'd you do this summer?" She said, "Nothing." You know, we have a lake, I'm not even going off my notes, we have a lake that is underutilized. We have citizens that are excited about this project, and we are working hard to raise money, and we've made some significant strides on raising money. And we have a lot of people, the people in town that y'all know, that everyone talks to about raising money. Rome wasn't built in a day, but we're working hard to raise this money. So, now I'm getting back to my notes. The primary reason I'm serving on the board is because of the life-changing opportunities this community center will make, and also because the Granger-McDonald Park that provides access to Nimitz Lake will give to kids and give to youth in our town. These are the reasons I ask you to vote yes for this project. It's a project that will impact people of all ages, all income levels, and all ethnicities, and all walks of life in our community. It is a project that will enable us to provide access to one of the city's most beautiful gems, Nimitz Lake, that is really barely used at all right now. It is a project that will improve the quality of life of our citizens and also increase economic activity in Kerrville, as Charlie spoke about. Both of these, I believe, are the goals of EIC, economic activity and quality of life. Our project does both those things. It will expand neighborhoods by improving the fellowship in our community. We want to have a community living room. I've seen those in place. They're awesome. People get together, have free fellowship. I also believe you should vote yes for this because the city accepted this property as a city park several years ago. I also think we should vote yes because the bond will be paid for by future sales taxes, not by increasing property taxes. And this project has the potential to increase business activity, thereby increasing future sales taxes. My husband and I have been in business for a long time, and we know that long-term projects often require long-term financing. And lastly, the citizens of our group have no financial interest in this, just the interest to make Kerrville a better place and to maximize the utilization of Nimitz Lake. Thank you.
Thank you.
Marcus Goodyear.
Y'all are awesome for being here this late. Marcus Goodyear, 514 East Lane. My wife and I have lived in Kerrville for 18 years. We raised our kids in Kerrville Public Schools. Tyvee Fight Never Dies. One thing we all agree on in Kerrville is that stories matter. It matters what stories we tell in our community. It matters what stories we tell about our community. The Calo Theater, which is part of this bond, is a wonderful venue for bringing fresh stories into our community, often told by members of the community. And now the Heart of the Hills Heritage Center is going to be a place for people to learn the stories about our community. I want to express my gratitude for the EIC for committing to improving the quality of life here in Kerrville through this bond, and I want to encourage the City Council to approve this bond issue. Approving the bond will help us celebrate the leaders of our community, both past and present. It will also help us understand what about our community shaped those leaders into the great people they became, people like Mary Holdsworth Butt. I am here as a private citizen, but as senior director of the HEBU Foundation, senior director of communications of the HEBU Foundation, I have access to the foundation archives, including many of her letters and essays. And honestly, I've developed a little bit of a crush on her. She's pretty amazing. Sorry, hon. You win. Some of you may know that in the 1930s, she expressed her vision to preserve natural lands for children to enjoy for 100 to 150 years in the future. And that vision is still alive in the HEBU Foundation camp out near Lakey. But you may not know that she expressed a similar vision for preserving history, and it is one of the reasons we have a professional archive at the Kerrville headquarters on Earl Garrett. But what better extension of that vision than to preserve history by funding the Heart of the Hills Heritage Center right next to the Butt-Holdsworth Memorial Library? She has a saying that "Long after price is forgotten, quality remains." And I am probably speaking out of turn here, but I believe she would be very proud of the city council members who vote to support this bond. May the quality you approved today continue to preserve history for 100 to 150 years.
Thank you. Thank you.
Kenny Bledsoe.
A long time ago.
Bruce Stricki.
Bruce Stricki, 821 Earl Garrett. I want to thank you all because this started with you. If I remember correctly, this started with the City Council asking the EIC to look at these five projects. And here we are tonight, talking about them. Now, I'm actually scared as hell of $20 million bonds and the other money that we already spent tonight, but this is exactly why people love to come to Kerrville. And the 500 homes, you know, people are going to enjoy these amenities and all that kind of stuff, and the folks who come here and continue to come here are going to enjoy that stuff. And there are folks like myself who do kayak on Nimitz Lake already, and maybe I won't enjoy the crowds as much, except I'll probably meet some new friends and we'll do some more kayaking. And I love Flat Rock Lake, too. There are wonderful amenities here, and they're a part of why my family moved here in 2006. And so I just want to thank you all for having the vision and the courage to look at using the, it's the hot tax, right, that comes to the EIC to do some of these bigger projects that we can't manage in our annual EIC budget or our city budget. Thank you for having the courage and the vision to suggest that to the EIC and let them go through the process. I'm nervous about it, but it's a really exciting thought to think about the things that we're going to do with the Heritage Center, with Nimitz Lake, with the Calo. And I am a season holder of the, with the...
Tickets.
The music, Symphony, Symphony of the Hills. I love that. Thank you, George. And the pool, we've been talking about the pool for almost 10 years. This is great. And the golf course, and the tennis center, and we just finished, we know that brings folks here. We have to maintain those things and make them better. So, thank you for looking out forward. This is something that you, as a council, have done, and it's wonderful.
Thank you, Bruce.
And that is the end of the citizen speakers.
Right. All right. I just want to say, when coming over tonight, I just, I got to think, thinking of all these major, 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 major things that we had on our agenda. But, yes, and they're big decisions, and we've agonized over them over for a long, long time. But how wonderful, how wonderful it is that our town has these things in front of us. I mean, we're only 25,000 people inside our city limits, and look at the potential that we have. Quality of life, housing, I mean, all of these things are part of that. It just, it really makes me proud, and I think we should all be that way. Anybody else?
Happy to make a motion when you're ready.
I'm ready.
I move we... Oh, do you need to speak? I'm sorry.
I do. I was waiting if y'all had anything first. Okay. I appreciate the comment that was made about the Parks and Rec Master Plan. I think it was mentioned actually at the EIC that the Granger-McDonald Park was not included in the whole process of the consideration of the plan, which is not true. I think there were some comments that were made that there was not a whole process and public process to receive input for the entire plan, which, again, is not true. Our Parks and Rec Advisory Board did a wonderful job over the course of the town a few years ago, getting that plan together, along with our wonderful Parks and Rec staff, and we've recently adopted it. And in that plan, though, you look at Granger-McDonald Park, and it's listed under the miscellaneous items. It was not prioritized as a need in the near future. And I think it's important to note, too, that it's been said a couple times, I've said it before, you know, reviewing the history of how this is all coming down, most of the people here that were speaking spoke one way or another regarding the Guadalupe River Center, some just overall in general, against the entire issuance of the debt. But focusing on the Guadalupe River Center, those board members and the representatives from there came to us, I think it was January of this year, and they said, when we were in a passive resolution indicating the City Council's support for the project, they explicitly said, and I made sure to clarify at that meeting and in a meeting, private meeting, with the vice chair of the River Center, told us that they would never come to the city for an ask, ever, monetary or otherwise. The only support that they needed was that resolution to show any of the investors that they had the support of the city so it would go forward. And then they jumped in at the last minute during the consideration of some bonds for this project and bypassed the entire process that all the other projects underwent to get on the list that was considered initially. And the original ask was originally about 15. There were a couple of options, 10 and then $15 million options. And they completely bypassed that process. Now, most of these projects on here are wants. They really are. They're not needs for our community at this point. Look at the sports complex, for an example, that was supported by this type of sales tax. It was supposed to be a booming economic improvement for our entire community and our city, and that has not turned out to be the case. In fact, the city puts down the drain about $1 million every single year to upkeep and maintain that entire complex, and yet we let the tenant use that for free, and we don't see any direct revenue back to the city for that. And we're having, we'll see, exact same situation, I think, here with this project. But for the needs that we do see, like the, I would say, give the Calo Theater for the roof and the HVAC systems, the reason that we really need to encourage this debt or that council, majority council wants to go this way, is because previous councils in this council has failed to properly budget the amount of money that's needed to properly maintain our facilities that we own. That's the problem. And so now we have this entity, EIC, who we, that we use like an endless bank account. And anytime the city does not have the money that it needs for a project, we go over to the EIC, ask them to break that piggy bank and give us the funds to continue with these projects. That should not be the case. But it does matter about how much money Guadalupe River Center funds as it has raised. Nobody gave us a straight-in to the amount yet, but it's not surprising why. It was supposed to have already been raised already. But it does matter because you're asking us to put forth $2.2 million into this project, and we don't know if that project, which is going to directly benefit from you, is even going to happen because all of them are supposed to be raised. With that, and for many other reasons, EIC did not vote unanimously on either times to approve this. Council didn't vote unanimously on the first time, it was 41 votes. I was going to vote against it. I'll be probably the only to vote against it again tonight. Thank you.
Hey, I was at the EIC meeting last night. Many of you were too, and it was not unanimous. Gary voted against it. He was the only vote against it, and he had valid reasons. And he had valid reasons, and I respected him for voting the way he did. I don't expect this vote to be unanimous. But I do expect us to take a vote, so I'm going to make a motion, if that's okay with you, ma'am.
Yes, okay.
I move that we adopt resolution number 36-23 with respect to the issuance of the $20 million in sales tax revenue bonds.
I'll second that. And did you have 36 dash?
I thought I did. 36 dash 2023.
Okay, very good. We have a second. All in favor, right hand, please. We have three in favor, opposed. We have one, Councilmember Garcia. Thank you all for sticking with us. And we appreciate it, and we'll give you permission to go home. We've got a couple more things to take care of.
We didn't think you'd really go home. I love that shirt, man.
And I gotta say, I admire you all, and I appreciate your volume.
Thank you.
I said, I'm just going to stay in the.
Okay, we've got to move on, sir. Thank you.
Good night.
All right. Shelley, 8B.
General event production contract between the CE Group, Inc. and the City of Curville for the Curville Eclipse Festival in an amount not to exceed $193,500. And there are no citizen speakers signed up.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I will make this very brief. I do not have a presentation for you. As we have discussed, the eclipse over the past several years, I believe you're very up to date on our plans as we presented in the workshop this evening. So attached before you tonight is a contract with the CE Group to produce the Curville Eclipse Festival to happen on April 8th, 2024. This is the group that we use for Curville River Festival. We are very pleased with this organization, and they will plan to produce the event for us. The amount of the contract is not to exceed $193,500. It is funded through the HOT fund as presented to you in your workshop today. And staff does recommend authorizing the city manager to finalize and execute this contract. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Just to clarify, HOT is an acronym, and that means it'll be paid for by visitors to our city who have stayed in a hotel.
Are correct. The Hotel Motel Occupancy Tax Fund.
Or short term rental.
Or short term rental. Someone who's spent the night here. Good.
Ashley, I'm, I'm a little concerned. And the reason I'm a little concerned, after the partial eclipse, and I understand, I realize this is going to be different, but we had so, so few people there in the evening. And, and I'm just wondering, this is on, it's on a weekday. Not that that in itself is going to affect anything, but I, I just wonder if we really are, if it's really necessary, if it's, I mean, this is a lot of money to spend, especially if we didn't have any more people than we had last time. I, I'm, I just, I question that.
I think the difference between the two events is going to be the nature of the events. The eclipse that occurred this year, we did not expect a large influx of tourists to our community. The 2024 eclipse, we do intend to have a large influx to our community. And our department was tasked, gosh, a couple of years, years ago now, with creating an event to hold people in the park to help mitigate traffic congestion. And so that's exactly what we've done with planning for this event, is to plan for a place to safely view the event. And we have lots of calls and emails daily. Staff can attest that we have lots of people interested in the event. They want to know exactly where they can go to view the location of the event in Curville, where they can park, what it's going to cost, how to get in, all the details. So we do feel like we're going to have a large presence at this event, and that's what we're planning for.
Mayor and Council also, you know, with CBB and, and some of EDC, we are showing occupancy rates already booked out where we did not have the occupancy provisions from the last one. So we were not at capacity at that point. On this one, they, I believe they already are at capacity.
I also understood that part of this amount may be made up with grants. Is that correct?
There will be a portion of it that'll be made up through revenue from merchandise sales, some grants from some other.
Are we seeking sponsors for the event?
We are seeking sponsors.
It is a lot of money.
Is there enough time? I mean, we're, we're looking at April. Is, can they, can they get somebody that's going to let, that's going to say to people, this is somebody worth staying for?
We would have loved to have brought this contract to you months ago. However, we weren't in a position budgetary wise to, to know our funding. So that's why we're bringing it to you now and on the same day as the workshop, is we need to get this contract done. If this is the, the pleasure of the council to do this event, we need to get this contract executed so our group can go ahead and go after the headliner and get somebody signed up.
I think our question was, is do you have enough time? Not why is it so late getting to us, but do you have enough time to, to attract that headliner?
Yes, we feel confident. I would like to mention that the budget for this event includes a headliner that would be very similar to the Curville River Festival type of headliner. If we're going to attract somebody that is going to attract people here, not for the eclipse or just for the music, that's not our goal, but that would be for the artist itself, looking at at least $100,000 for the artist alone, not including all of the other event logistic expenses.
So part of this 193, go, the 100 part, 100 of it goes to the artist?
No, I'm saying if we were to attract a larger name, that's what we would be looking at to pay them to get here.
Gotcha.
But then by doing this, you're not going to do anything in the fall. There will be no Fall Festival whatsoever.
There will be no Curville River Festival in 2024. That's correct. We're allocating the funding and the staffing resources to this event.
And in the initial thought process, when, you know, kind of late in the game on this was if council wanted to, you know, do both the River Fest and kind of plan for the eclipse, some of the unknowns versus some of the knowns, then what would that funding look like? And we tried, we kind of tasked the team with saying, how would that kind of look if we said, if we planned for both, what would that be versus us rolling it into one and just doing one big event a year? And this ties into that big event.
It's ironic that we've, we've talked about such big dollar amounts tonight, and we're going, God, this seems like a lot of money. But it does.
My only concern is that we just didn't, there just wasn't anybody there the last time. And, I mean, we could have saved that money and.
We know of a couple of groups that are going to be coming up.
You're good. Thank you.
We do already know of a couple of bus groups that are coming in, that are actually coming in from San Antonio. We have people that are coming in from Australia. Like, we've, we've, we've heard from these people already. So we are anticipating those kinds of groups coming in as well as the ones that are already filling in the hotels, so.
But the.
We have heard more than we did before.
But there are people that would stay for this kind of thing?
Absolutely. And, and a lot of that is to mitigate traffic, especially with buses. They're not going to want to get into that traffic, so we're shuttling these people from one location to another to kind of help maintain that. So shuttling them back to their cars is going to kind of slow that down as well.
Yeah, we've heard about the traffic flow.
Yeah.
But, you know, the sun goes away, the sun comes back, everybody wants to get in their car. So what, how are we going to?
Yeah, that's.
That's our, that's our goal, is to try to find somebody that's going to keep somebody there. I mean, we have to get, in order for us to actually do that, we've got to get started. The longer that we wait, the harder it's going to be. The one thing that we do have is that it is on a Monday, and a lot of artists don't play on Mondays, so we have a higher probability of bringing somebody higher in. That may take a little bit less because of the opportunity that it may be presenting to them.
Do we know, are, is, are our schools going to be out that day?
They are.
Yes, ma'am. The, the other thing, too, and we talked, we went back and forth on this as well, is some of the lessons learned, Ashley was going to speak on, was starting the music a lot sooner after the eclipse is over versus the delay in it. The other thing, too, from the emergency management side, talking with both chiefs, is we know traffic is going to be a problem. So having something to do, especially for kids or for, you know, for people there while they're kind of waiting to figure out what those traffic models are, you know, the traffic flows are looking like, is better than everybody just piling in and leaving. So we're trying to balance, you know, both of those. So we don't think even if they necessarily want to stay, they might not have a choice. They might be forced to stay there because of some of the traffic flows and traffic issues.
You have something to keep them busy.
Yeah, and keeping that shuttle rotation, it's going to mitigate some of that as well and keep them in the park. So it's entertaining them while they're there. Yeah.
Well, and it's comforting that it's going to be paid for with HOT money.
Yes, yeah.
That's true. Okay, are we ready to vote on this? Do you have a motion? I'll make a motion to authorize the city manager to finalize and execute the contract. Second? Second? We have a second. All in favor, right hand?
I had my hand up to try to. I was trying to get in before you made your motion. We don't even have the, the money allocated for this yet. So there's going to be, have to be a budget amendment, which we went through at the workshop. Is there a reason why this is being authorized first instead of the budget amendment, since it's not even in place?
Really no good answer for that one. I mean, typically, yes, the budget amendment would be there. However, from just the planning perspective, we are, I'd say, maybe putting the cart before the horse a little bit, but we will bring the budget amendment as soon as possible.
And I'll clean up some other things for the last budget, so.
Right. So also, to think about that.
At the, yeah. Please.
And we talked about this today in workshop a little bit, and it was really just a timing issue. And so we can't bring a budget amendment to you before the 12th of December. That also requires two readings. So, you know, to get that passed through that process, you know, we would need to go ahead and execute this if this is what you chose to do. And we talked about that a little bit today, it's just that's why we had those reversed, and this was coming to you first.
We need to make the motion again.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. And all in favor, right hand, please.
Can, can I finish my comments?
Oh, I thought, I'm sorry, I thought you were done.
You keep thinking that. So I don't, just on the principle of the matter, I don't like the fact that we're approving money that we don't have allocated in a budget for. And the monies won't be, money won't be allocated there until January, so we're two months away from that. I also think it's a little ironic that some of my colleagues are expressing their concern with the amount of money that this is when we just approved something that was 10 times this amount, over 10 times this amount. I just, I don't, I don't know how necessary it is either to put this amount of funding into this type of project. I mean, I don't know why we can't, I mean, we don't always have to go, we don't always go through this process and force to, to remove this money over for this project and then not even have the amendment done in place so we actually have the money. It just, it does seem like we are, not it does seem, we are putting the cart before the horse, but I also just don't think it's absolutely necessary. And so can you help me understand, like, what do we not have that we absolutely need to spend this much amount of money on for this, on this contract?
Not speaking to the funding portion, but speaking to the timing of it.
Well, my question was to the, to the other part of it, so.
Well, if it was a dollar, if it was $193,000, you don't have it funded right now. But if, if, talking to park staff, I asked, I asked them the other day, when, when do you need to be working on this? And they said six months ago, right? So they have, they're, they're six months behind the schedule for coordinating all the things that they have to coordinate for the event. So from that standpoint, that's the rationale for this priority.
This money would otherwise be used for the River Festival if we did have it? Or is that not the case?
Part of it, yeah.
Of course not. And also, Councilmember, see, on the HOT funds, HOT funds being restricted funds for heads and beds and for very specific, you know, funding use, it is, falls under kind of a different funding category.
I understand.
Because of that, that, that's kind of where we're comfortable bringing it to y'all, at least now to present to council, and then of course for the December 12th, second ratings and everything for the budget amendment. But because it's all under HOT funds, we're not pulling this out of others or the, some of the portions of it. Because some of the portions were budgeted, you know, looking at the expense and revenue, but this 193, I believe, is just a contract, is for the HOT funds.
What portion would we use for the River Festival?
So there was a split one, I think it was 12,000.
Right.
And some change out of the general fund. All, all the River Fest was budgeted. Budgeted, yes, 90,000. So there's a portion that is not budgeted that would come out of the HOT, bringing it to council for the contract.
So I don't know if that answers my question. I feel like it muddied the water a little bit more.
Let me try this.
Okay.
We have $90,000 budgeted for River Fest in 2024.
Also, Councilmember, if you don't mind being respectful, please, I'm trying to get some questions answered. I know you're sighing over there and making comments.
Roman, please, just listen for the answers.
No, I'm trying to, but I'm hearing some sighs and comments over there that I think are disrespectful. So if you don't mind, Mayor, too, keeping this meeting running with the decorum that it deserves.
And I don't appreciate your rudeness, Roman. So go ahead with your questions, please.
Okay, to funding, $90,000 allocated for River Fest.
Right.
Remember that we also have those merchandise sales and things like that that also are going to offset some of this. The reason the contract is coming to you is because it's over $50,000. If it were under that, then we could take care of that in-house by the city manager's authorization. But since it's over 50, it's like any other contract that we would bring to you for that. So really, it's just up to the purview of council whether, you know, you feel like this is something you want to move forward with as far as the event is concerned. The reason we put it in this order is just like I explained today in the workshop, you know, because it is a special fund, budget allocation, I guess, is, I'm not going to say secondary, it's part of the process, but those funds are used differently. And so we could come to you and request that as a regular, you know, part of our doing business. But it's the $50,000 and over is the reason the contract's coming to you today.
Right.
They can't, they can't proceed with that, without that. So, but from a funding standpoint, $90,000 was allocated for this year. Does that help with that?
It does, thank you. I saw a pending question on what we absolutely don't have that we need to spend this much money on for a contractor, but.
Well, when you say we don't have, what do you mean?
Well, that's exactly, that's, that's the question. I do, an answer to that, because I don't know what we don't have. The question is, what don't we have? I can't answer that question because I'm not a staff member. Not that one, no. No, that, they just talked about the amendment to the, to the budget and the funding request and how it was going to be allocated.
Ashley, do you have something to add?
So the CE Group is our, is our contractor. They're the ones that are producing the event. They, they hire the artists, they do all the logistics, and so that's what we would be paying them, them to do. We don't have the capacity or the resources within our department staff to be able to produce that event, similar to the Curville River Festival. We do the same thing. You're welcome.
We have a motion on the floor?
We do.
Are there any more comments? Questions? All in favor, please raise your right hand. Three, four, opposed. Councilmember Garcia opposed.
Just so you know, it's not in my lack of confidence. I hope it's a great event. I just think it's a lot of money to be spending, so.
Financial report for fiscal year ended September 30th, 2023.
Your challenge is to keep us awake.
I was going to see how quick I could clear the room. So the good news is this is very short. It's way too early for me to bring you anything for fiscal year '24, but I thought it would be important, since we have an impending budget amendment, to at least give you some updates on general fund and water fund for fiscal year '23. So really quickly, so this is looking at the general fund, and I think I said this the last two years at this point in the year. These are estimates. I feel fairly confident in these estimates, although we still have some year-end cleanup to do and a few receivables we have to deal with, but feel pretty confident in this, in these numbers. So estimated in the general fund, we're expected to end in revenue 709,000 better than budget. Property tax, right about 100,000, but remember, those three categories of property tax, some of those that are kind of unpredictable. Sales tax is going to be a pretty big miss, but we've been talking about this for the last six months or so. Intergovernmental revenue, a miss on, that's a K-Pub franchise fee that's going to be a miss, and that's just from revenue and their costs. And I know Amy's been here and kind of explained how electricity gets billed and those kind of things, so we'll continue to watch that. Service revenue is better than budget, almost 400,000. That's primarily due to EMS, as we've talked about several times. And then the big guy that, that is always the unknown is that interest revenue. So interest revenue alone, 664,000 better than budget. Keep in mind, we do not rely heavily on that, either through budget. We always budget that very conservatively, as, you know, you've seen what the market's done in the last few years. So we just don't ever know. So that's always a conservative budget. So we're still leveraging the interest rates as they are right now while it's kind of hurting us, you know, on the supply side. It's, it's really helping us on the revenue side. So. So overall, you can see at the bottom, the estimated general fund change in net position, about one point three million. Three hundred and fifty-six thousand of that is from streets carryover, so two point one million dollars they had budgeted in streets maintenance. So kind of props to them and engineering on the work that you saw happen this year. Pretty, pretty dramatic change in just the dollars spent in streets as far as work that they've been able to accomplish. So after we moved that out to C I P, about nine hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars in just overall change in net position, which is, is a good thing for the general fund. Again, a big part of that coming from interest. Now, this is really just for you to look at. It's just a graphical form of revenue and expense comparisons estimated to budget. So just by major categories, so I didn't bring all the small ones in, but just looking at the major ones and how they compared to the budget for the beginning of this year. Okay, water fund, really quickly, same thing. These are still estimates, and we have a few pieces of November billing that we'll have to do some calculations for to clean it up for year end. You can see, stage four water conservation went in on August twenty-fourth, as we talked about last time. Water sales overall, it's going to be about a hundred and twelve thousand dollars behind budget. So you can see the impact there to our tiered rate structure. So when about a third of our revenue on our heavy water cycles are irrigation, you can really see the rate structure differential there. Reuse is going to end the year better than budget. All of our contracted reuse users use their allocated amount that they're contracted for. Waste disposal, we've talked about this one, it's going to be about an eighty-seven thousand dollar miss. Twenty and twenty-one were heavy years, and so we kind of increased that budget based on that. But in twenty-four, you'll see that budget has been reduced based on the last few years.
Real quick, I just want to add a point, Mayor, Council, that, you know, showing those kind of revenue numbers kind of just shows and reiterates that it's not just revenue drawing, and we're not in it just for the money or for the want to kind of clear that point up.
Correct. I'm just the information gatherer. Expenses, personnel, better than budget by about a hundred and twenty-six thousand. That's about where we were this time last year. And then other is substantially better than budget, a hundred and eighty-eight thousand, but remember contingencies in that other, so we just didn't expend a lot of it, of contingent this year. So overall fund, expected to be about three hundred and seventy-six thousand better than budget, change in net position, so. Those things, as far as excess funds, once we do fund balance calculations, will be part of our budget amendment for your consideration. And I only brought HOT fund in just because we've been discussing this so much. I think I'd originally told you we were going to miss on the occupancy tax piece by about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It was close. These are our final numbers. You can see the merchandise sales there, those will act, those are actual numbers for twenty-three. Those numbers are still growing in twenty-four, so we expect to see, hopefully, better than we were able to estimate for you in our presentation earlier today. And that will help offset some of those expenses related to April's event. Overall, better than budget. Remember, we do have a million dollars in this budget committed to H H H C, which has not been expended. So that will also be part of the budget amendment to roll that forward until such time that we may use that. So just your upcoming events, we've talked about solar eclipse, all the things that we did today. We'll have the, post the preliminary official statement for the revenue bonds that you passed today on the ideal website on the fifteenth for pricing. We'll go out and price those on the twenty-eighth. We were told today by Hilltop, so Ann called and said that we actually had seen another shift in the market, so could potentially look at ten basis points less than we actually said yesterday. So we're watching that and we're hopeful. That's not a guarantee, but she also said that the Thanksgiving week is usually a pretty slow week in the market, so that should be really good for us, too. So auditors will be on site that week following Thanksgiving, and then, of course, we'll bring you the budget amendment on the twelfth and then receive funds from sales tax revenue bonds on the nineteenth of December. Anybody have any questions?
Anybody?
Chief will call that I meet your deadline.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Julie.
Thanks. Thank you.
All right, we have one last item, ten A, appointments to the Food Service Advisory Board. And our interview team, do you have recommendations for us?
I visited with Michael Clark, Larry Ray. I was not able to get ahold of Daniel. I did leave him a message, and I do know him. And I also talked with Darrell Poe. And I think all three of these gentlemen would be a good fit for the Food Service Advisory Board. I don't know if you were able to visit with them, but I wholeheartedly support them. So.
Can you cover with that, Roman?
Yep. I wasn't able to reach one of them. I think it was the same one you said.
He works very hard.
At the end of the hills.
I've met him before.
Yes.
So, yeah.
Okay, so anyway. This time, if you'll agree, I'll make the motion to nominate Michael Clark, Daniel Porte, and Larry Ray to the Food Service Advisory Board.
Okay, I'll second that.
Okay. And all in favor, right hand? And it is unanimous. Thank you to these gentlemen for being willing to step up and help us. All right, we have come to the end of the evening. It's only almost eleven o'clock.
I'm always ready.
That's right.
All right, is there anything for the good of the cause, anything for future agendas that we need to address tonight? Harry, none?
I had, I had a pending request to have on this agenda. The city's water permit didn't get put on this agenda. That was specifically in their request and voted five oh to do. I know we had a separate workshop to go about that, but I had some other things that needed to be shared with the rest of council, and I think we even, we should get some information on it. So it didn't happen. I'm hoping to get an update or figure out what's going on and you know, get on our next regular meeting, because that was, the request was to have it today, and it didn't happen, so.
But they have been keeping us informed that they're, of what they're doing, and I think we just need to have some patience there as they work through that.
Absolutely, and I respect what they're doing, but I don't think they should go by, bypass the vote that council took and the action that we took to have it on tonight's agenda. So my request is, again, let's have it on the next regular meeting agenda and make a firm understanding that when we vote to do something, it's expected to be done. With all due respect to everybody.
I think I would like to change that and for it to say that we would like to have it on the next agenda if there is something that has changed and they, that they need to bring to us. So we have, we have Roman's motion of, of absolutely bringing it to us at the next agenda or at the next meeting. Do we have a second for that? Okay, we do not have a, a second. I would like to make the motion that it would come to us. I would like just for it to say, it comes to us when there is something that we need to actually, we know about. Does that make sense? Am I, does that make sense?
Who you're asking?
I'm asking, I'm asking those two. Is there a better way to say that?
No. Headwaters meets Thursday. You know, in response to the, the comment made during visitors forum about the, the press release and the opinion piece in the, in the.
Yeah, I'm sorry, point of no, this isn't a time, this is.
I can respond to that.
He's responding to us. It's all right, Roman.
Headwaters is meeting today, or I'm sorry, on Thursday. I will keep you all updated upon if we get any response. I just want council to know that in response to the public comments made during the public comment, I helped draft that opinion piece that went into the paper. Our attorneys looked at it. I stand behind every statement made. Every statement made in that opinion was shared with Headwaters during our meeting previously with them. So they, they're aware. I don't, I mean, there's nothing else to say. I'll keep you all updated. I, I do believe there are a number of legal issues involved, and to the extent that we can have our water law attorneys come, that'll be important as well.
All right. At this point, I am going to recommend that we, we leave things as they are. Okay?